Okay. Want to welcome you all to the business meeting here today for the city and ask you to join Carol Smith, who's going to open our meeting in prayer.
Please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today with especially grateful hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for our police department and firemen and other people that protected our city from what could have been a tragedy yesterday afternoon. And dear Lord, we're just thankful for them who went out in harm's way to see that our safe city is safe. Dear Lord, we pray for a special blessing on Kevin Starbuck. Dear Lord, as he goes out on a new venture, we pray for success and joy in his life. He'll be missed, dear Lord, but we thank you for the service he's given. Dear Lord, for the many decisions that are about to be made in this council chamber, we ask for your direction and leadership. All these things we ask and pray in your blessed name. Amen.
Amen. To join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Carol, thank you so much for leading our prayer for us today. We really appreciate those words. I'm going to hand the microphone over to our city manager, Jared Miller, because we do have some things that we want to say and we want to honor and recognize Kevin Starbuck. This is his last city council meeting with us, so Jared?
All right. We just want to take a few minutes to, as I mentioned in previous council meeting, Kevin is going to be taking a great opportunity with the Texas Department of Emergency Management, being one of seven number two people in that department working for Chief Nim Kidd, who works for the governor. So this is a big opportunity for Kevin. He's going to represent the city of Amarillo well. He's been with the city of Amarillo. Kevin, exactly how long is it?
Twenty years on two stints.
Twenty years on two stints. We've got it. We've got something that we're going to show here in just a minute that's going to illustrate that. But Kevin has been one of the most trusted, one of the most reliable people that I have ever worked with. He is my right hand. I previously already lost another right hand. I've proven that we can grow good right hands in this organization, but this is going to be a challenge. And the focus for me is not to focus on that. The focus on me is to focus on this opportunity for Kevin and the opportunity for the state. Kevin's going to be in charge of one seventh, one of seven assistant chiefs to the State Department of Emergency Management. He'll be in charge of the entire metroplex area and 30-something counties around the Dallas area. So this is a big opportunity. It says a lot about our team when they can be eligible to be appointed to a role like this without even having a job search. Chief Kidd didn't even open up the job to applications because he knew who he wanted. He already knew who he wanted, and we had him. So he had the ability to come get him, and I'm not going to hold that against him because this is a great benefit to the state, as great as he's been for the city of Amarillo and he has been, especially been tested over this last year, last 18 months, being the deputy city manager in charge of public health, also being the deputy city manager in charge of emergency management. And just about every aspect of our response to coronavirus, Kevin's had his hand very elbows-deep in this whole process. So he is one of the reasons why we are one of the cities across the United States doing vaccinations better than anyone else, with a better communication plan to our residents, and all the different things that have been done well. It's been a really challenging process, been a real challenging 18 months, because the guidance to the city has changed over and over and over and over through the governor and through the CDC and through federal guidelines and through Kevin's leadership, Casey's leadership. We've been able to stay on top of those, be in front of those in as much as any jurisdiction can. So great work. I think if you all can join me, an applause for Kevin, because... I walked into his office early this morning and I said, "Oh, my goodness, Kevin. I just realized next Friday is your last day with us." And it's going to get real with me, I know, next week. And I know it's real with him already because he's looking for houses, and it's a challenging housing market all over the state and the United States, but it's certainly a challenging housing market in the metroplex. But I really can't think of a bigger loss to this organization than Kevin right now. And I really do, it is important for me and it's important for the rest of this organization and our community, if at all I can advise this, to think about the opportunities that are presented by what Kevin's going to be able to do for the state and also to understand that Kevin's built a great cadre of leaders below him or that report to him, and we have a great cadre of leaders we've been able to develop in this organization. We are going to recover. I mean, we're going to move productively and quickly in a direction that's going to take care of this organization, this community. But right now, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you, Kevin.
I think the mayor, Pro Tim, has something for you. It's a bit of a tradition.
You get the traditional street sign, Kevin. Excellent. That's wonderful.
We were trying to decide what color to make the sign. A lot of our city signs are green, but we didn't want it to be construed with a business in town, a green sign that says Starbuck.
I just have one comment. Councilmember Howard Smith wants to know if this street is now going to be in Dallas.
Well, Kevin, on behalf of the council, but mostly on behalf of the 200,000 citizens that you've served for the last 20 years, we want to say thank you. This morning, as I was trying to think of the three characteristics that I would use to describe you, I thought, "Well, how do you say obstinate in a nice way? How is that, you know, a characteristic?" But you do it well. And so three things that I've noticed in working closely with you, especially in the last 18 months, are that you're aware. And because of your awareness and the way you watch around corners, we have avoided many problems or pre-planned those problems so that we were proactive instead of reactive. And that's a tremendous advantage to be in. You're bold, and that's what I decided was the positive of obstinate. I decided that I always knew what your opinion was, especially if it disagreed with mine. And you were never afraid to ask questions, to point out differences, and you relied heavily on the training and experience that you have. And you are very well-trained, and you have 20 years of experience. You're good at what you do. And then the last thing I thought was that you're hardworking, because no matter how the conversation ended up, whatever plan the team put together, you went out and you executed it diligently. And so I would pick you a dozen times to be on our team, but it gives me a tremendous amount of joy to bless you and Kara and your boys as you all go out on this new adventure and you make the state of Texas team that much stronger, and we'll get the benefit of that here in Amarillo.
Thank you.
Blessings. Yeah. Anybody else? Anything else? All right. Go hang that sign.
All right.
Thank you all.
(applause)
Oh, right. The picture. Thank you. All right, now give us an A. We didn't need a whole box of Kleenex to do that one. All right. Next on the agenda is public address, and I will hand that to our moderator, Ms. Jenny Rodriguez Ramirez, sorry. Always almost do that, Jenny.
That's all right.
That's the first time I've officially done it, though.
Okay.
Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us. We are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. To ensure everyone is able to speak, we limit each speaker's time to three minutes. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound from the dais to alert you. You have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and state law, speakers are asked to limit their comments to items posted on the agenda. Doing so will ensure we are following the guidelines and are able to have an effective meeting for all. Thank you for your consideration for this process and for your valuable input. The first speaker will be Dora Maroney, and she is speaking on item 3A. Dora Maroney.
Hello. My name's Dora Maroney, and I'm here on behalf of the Water Tower Project. I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've, where we are right now. We've passed the $5,000 fundraising mark, so we have a little bit left to go. But if we could get 195 people to donate $66 each, we would be there. Our group has, there's three groups that went together, three nonprofit associations, the Historic Sixth on Route 66 Association, the San Jacinto Neighborhood Association, and the Old Route 66 Association of Texas have all partnershiped in this effort to raise the $18,000. We have, to date, we have seven states donating besides the state of Texas and two countries. We thank everybody that has donated so far, including the mayor, and we hope that a lot of others will get on board and donate, and any amount is welcome. It doesn't have to be $66. It can be a dollar, or it can be $1,000. And we appreciate everybody that's donated already and hope to get the $18,000 raised as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dora.
Thank you, Ms. Maroney. No one else has signed up to speak on an agenda item. Mayor?
Okay. Moving on to agenda item 1A, anything to review for items on the regular meeting or any attachments, council? No. Mr. City Attorney?
What was the topic?
Well, I put on there City Hall, but we've always had a precedence of the city of Amarillo that all any citizens speak on anything pertaining to the city. Now suddenly, we're not allowed to speak on anything other than what's on the agenda?
Correct.
That actually says right there.
That is correct. That is correct.
They speak on...
You can only, you can only, you can only speak on something on the agenda. That is state law, and it's also the practice of this, of this council. So you had a discussion with Mr. Miller about this this morning?
Yes.
Okay. So he made you aware of that, correct?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Okay. Item 1A on the agenda is to review the agenda items for the regular meeting and the attachments. Is there anything, council, that we need to address in agenda item 1A?
You guys are prepared?
No, I don't have anything, Mayor.
Anything in item 1B, then, is moving on to the coronavirus update? Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, thanks. We have Casey Stotan, Director of Public Health, to give us the information. Casey?
Read the petition.
Hi, Casey.
Good afternoon. So we'll talk about numbers, and then we just have a little additional information specifically about our status level orange and other topics. So as of today, there are a total of 35,695 cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties. Today, we had an increase of 155 cases. We do have a total of 852 active cases and 744 deaths in Potter and Randall Counties. Since July 22nd, we've had an increase in 298 active cases. The adult bed utilization at our local hospitals is 76.5%. ICU utilization is at 60%, and the ventilator use is at 48%. Our five-day new case average has increased to 81 new cases per day, and that's up from 63 new cases per day on July 22nd. With these metrics, we did move into level orange on July 22nd. We will be in level orange for two weeks evaluating the data. Next Wednesday, we will either stay at level orange or move to another status level, depending on what the data tells us. Level orange does indicate that our community's hospital capacity is limited. Yesterday, our local hospitals reported 58 patients hospitalized with COVID-19. That is an increase from 28 patients hospitalized with COVID on July 13th. The seven-day rolling positivity rate is currently at 12%, and that's up from 8% on July 22nd and 3% on July 13th. The positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is currently at 36%. And again, the five-day new case average is at 81 new cases per day. Our GA 34's hospitalization percentage was at 5.81% yesterday, and that means that just under 6% of all of our hospitalized patients have COVID-19. Testing has ramped up at the drive-through testing site, and so we are seeing an increase there with a need for testing. So that drive-through testing site is operational. Patients can call 378-6300 if they need testing. Our current vaccination coverage rate in Potter County is, has increased to 37.03% and in Potter County is 38.79%. Our community does still remain under the 40% mark. August 6th, Amarillo Public Health will move from the Civic Center and provide COVID-19 vaccines at the Public Health Department there on 1,000 Martin Road. The variant information that we have indicates that the UK variant, the Brazil variant, the US California variant, and the Delta variant are all circulating here in Potter, Randall County. I don't have specific numbers of the variants, however, the lab did tell me that about five weeks ago, the Delta variant constituted about 15% of all of the variants that they tested. Three weeks ago, about 52%, and two weeks ago, almost 90%. So we know that the Delta variant is circulating here in our community. The public health response remains consistent. Vaccination is critical. If a person has not had the chance to be vaccinated, masking is especially important. For all of us, if we're sick, we need to stay home, good hand washing, all of those things that we've talked about so often. And this year, since it appears that masking will not be as robust as last year, it is important to get the flu vaccine, as our hospitals are seeing other respiratory illnesses like flu and RSV in addition to COVID. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Council, any questions? Howard?
Have you considered giving vaccinations at sod poodle games?
That has actually been one of the things that our team has talked about on our list of all of the different places. So yes...
We have several sod poodle games left.
Okay. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stanley?
So Casey, thank you. How are we testing for the variant? Do we have a PCR test still?
Yes, so we do PCR testing. We also have access to the antigen testing at the, our public health drive-through, but the variant testing is done, so all of the, all of the testing that's done throughout the city, the hospitals, the public health testing, that's all sent to the state lab, and then they send that out for variant testing.
So we still use the PCR test for any COVID test, and then through that process, they're able to decipher which, you know, if it's COVID-19 or Delta variant, whatever it would be?
So it would have to be positive for COVID, and then once, so then that, the sample is sent on to the state lab, and then, and all of the, all the labs, so we use PPL labs. So the labs that are conducted there at PPL, if they're positive for COVID, then a sample of that is sent on to the state lab, and then from there, it's tested for the variants.
Okay. And are we, did the CDC issue any new guidelines on the PCR test?
So that is...
I'm confused a little bit on what they recalled and what they didn't.
So they didn't recall anything. They just, so every now and then, you know, there'll be updates to the procedures, and so that was, they just added the ability to add the COVID, the COVID testing to the multiplex. And what that does is it allows, if you have a multiplex platform, then you can test, like basically do one swab, and it will test for all of the, everything that's on that multiplex in one test. And so it hasn't changed anything. It just has allowed for those providers who do have a multiplex to test for a number of conditions. And that, that has, we, you know, our hospitals have that system, those kind of things, so...
It's not anything new.
It's not.
Okay. And then how are we, do you know how we're triaging, triaging patients that go into the hospitals? So in the way of if I got sick and I went in and they said, "Hey, have you been vaccinated?" And I said, "No," would, would they test me for anything any different than if I went in and they said, "Hey, have you been vaccinated?" And I said, "Yes"?
I don't. That would be a question for the hospitals.
Okay. And you and I have had a good conversation last week, and I really appreciate you educating me. And I think even for Mr. Miller here, it's good for us to hear you and the city manager maybe talk a little bit more in what your role is, because I know from, from that side of the rope watching last year, it sure felt different than maybe where we're at today. And so even like why we went to level orange, you know, where we're still below 1,000 active cases, and we were hovering right below 5%. So can you talk a little bit about that and kind of your role and how you feel like you're really trying to meet all those guidelines?
Sure. So, you know, our role as a local public health department is, is one of, we're responsible for providing information to our community. We're responsible for carrying out the guidelines set forth by the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services. So there's a number of, of response activities there with, with specific regard to our color levels. That is a, you know, we want to make sure that our community has the very best information and knows kind of where our community stands. And so we, very early on, we set kind of parameters for each color designation. And again, that allows for our community to know where, especially our hospitals, stand with regard to their capacity. In this time of pandemic, you know, we, you know, saving lives is, is most important, saving our hospital capacity, so that when people do get sick, they, they know that they have a place to go is, is priority. So we want to make sure that our community knows where we stand. So when we move from level yellow to level orange, we need our community to know that our hospital capacity is limited. And so that information sharing piece is, is, is critical in this, in these status levels.
I think one thing to note, Casey mentioned hospital capacity, the, the main driving variable of what our condition is, and really the measures taken by the state as well, was not the raw numbers, but the hospital capacity. So why are we going to orange when our numbers are not nearly what they were when we came out of orange?
Right.
And the reason for that is our hospital capacity has been adjusted. It adjusted up and ramped up significantly so we could handle a lot more COVID cases. After we made it through, and I air quote "made it through," given our current situation with Delta and other variants, but after we made it through in, say, April or May, the hospitals released and Department of State Health Services reallocated the nursing surge that allowed us to have the enhanced capacity or the increased capacity. So as that capacity went down, a smaller number of COVID patients in the hospitals eat up a larger percentage of the capacity because you just have fewer beds allocated. So that capacity can go up, and what we're trying to do is manage it to where it doesn't need to go up. So that's why we put out the, we changed to orange, because orange, we already had preset triggers, which will move us to orange, which is a percentage of ventilators, percentage of beds, percentage of...
ICU.
ICU patients, right, out of, out of total ICU capacity, and there's one other thing.
The five-day new case average.
The five-day new case average. So all of those things are above the trigger for orange at this point, and it happened very quickly. So that's why we moved to orange last week. As far as, you were talking about the roles that we play, we all have lanes. So DSHS, local jurisdictions, FDA, CDC, you know, federal lane, state lane, local lanes, the local job, and I'm not saying that we don't care, because people having concerns about the efficacy, safety, all these other questions about vaccines, those are appropriate things that guide what you do and what individuals do. But as far as federal policy, we can't change that at the local level, nor do we have the resources or the manpower, person power, to be able to fact-check or disprove or prove, you know, all the different recognized experts that have led to the, to the vaccine protocols and the vaccines that we have right now. So, you know, as far as roles, our role is to, as effectively as possible, take care of our community and get these shots in arms as dictated by the best practice that we get from the Fed, from, from FDA, CDC, DSHS, and other places that promulgate all that guidance, using a ton of expert guidance to make it happen, understanding there are other people out there who could be considered experts, not saying they are and they are not. However, the local venue is, or the local jurisdiction is probably not the place where we can have an effective evaluation of policies, protocols, positive or negative. So I don't want to sound like it's, it's not important. It is important. As far as what we do, though, in the, in the here and now, we follow best practices. We follow expert guidance to address the emergency the best way that we can, but it doesn't mean that those aren't valid concerns. They just need to be taken up with someone that can actually impact federal policy, and we just don't have the ability to do that.
Right. And I'm assuming hospital capacity is probably regulated to staffing as well, right? We ramped up staffing for a while, and so we may not necessarily have the same amount of people. Two more quick questions, and then we can move on. So do you, in exactly what you're saying, expert, I guess, data would be CDC. That's really what we rely on. And so the VAERS data, did you have an opportunity to, to look at that, specifically looking at like death rates from the vaccine and then anything else that would be like a, a trauma?
I did. So, you know, there's been lots of...
Can I interrupt and ask, what is VAERS data?
Yes. So VAERS is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that is where anyone, so the, you know, providers, the public can make reports about adverse events into this system. And it's a very important system. It plays an important role in the overall climate of vaccine safety. However, there are some limitations, and the VAERS system notes those limitations on a disclaimer right on the website. And so, again, the, you know, the VAERS data is very, very valuable. However, they do state in their, their disclaimer right on the website that VAERS reports alone cannot be used to determine if a vaccine caused or contributed to an adverse event or illness. The reports may contain information that is incomplete, inaccurate, coincidental, or unverifiable. In large part, reports VAERS are voluntary, which means they are subject to biases. This creates specific limitations on how the data can be used scientifically. Data from VAERS reports should always be interpreted with these limitations in mind. So there's, and just a cursory glance at some of those VAERS reports, so I pulled all of the VAERS reports that had been entered, and a couple of them, you know, just, just looking at them, one, one entry said, "Coughing up blood, significant hemoptysis, cardiac arrest started the day after vaccine, but likely related to ongoing progression of lung cancer." So likely not related to the vaccine at all. These are very important items to note and very significant to patients, but very, you know, anyone can make these reports. It says, again, "Reports may be incomplete, inaccurate, coincidental, unverified information." It's, and it goes on to further state that VAERS data available to the public include only the initial report dated, report given to VAERS. And updated information, which includes facts from medical records and corrections reported during follow-up, are not available to the public, so the reports are inconclusive. And so the VAERS, while VAERS does play a very important role, they have what are called, they have, you know, these safety checks, and when they start to see patterns, just like with the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, they'll put a pause, they will do more in-depth analysis, and then if, you know, if the FDA, the CDC say, "Yep, this, this is, this proves to be safe," then we'll continue on with that. So this is a very important database, but to simply take the data and apply it universally is completely inappropriate and misleading. So, and, and they say this on their website. And so it's, it's required to acknowledge that you've read the disclaimer before searching through the database. So I think that it's very important to, to understand that the limitations and the strengths of VAERS before kind of applying it universally to, to the reports that are in VAERS.
And so in a system of checks and balances, like where are we, as a community, relying on? on valid data? Because I, I looked at the VAERS and so I, I, I do agree with you. There's probably some coincidental circumstantial things that are adverse reactions. But when we're looking at a death, um, and then, you know, that within so many hours, let's say, can you pull the VAERS data and search through it in, in 72 hours? Like within 72 hours, this is how many deaths we've had within so many weeks or whatever? Is that how that works?
You can. There's, um, it's a, it's a database that allows you to query, um, whatever parameters, um, that you've set in that query.
So as an example, um, seven 16th, July 16th, 11,405 deaths in the USA reported to VAERS. Could we go through that data? Should we go through that data as a community and look and see, you know, here's how many of those happened within 72 hours? The, the other reason for concern is just historically, what have we done with vaccines in the past? So like the swine flu, um, you know, 54 deaths and they pulled that vaccine off of the, the market. Um, you know, this vaccine, these three vaccines that constitute this here in the USA would be far and above whatever that was. So I'm trying to get some realistic comfort.
Sure.
In, in where we're at with this particular reporting.
So when I pulled the VAERS data today, there were only 8,000, a little over 8,000 reports. So that 11,000 number, I don't know where that came from. So that's an inaccurate number.
Okay. And, and I'm, I'm sure with what you're saying in the way of how you can query that, I mean, I, we have.
So I looked at all events. So I looked at all events. So there's all events was just a little over 8,000. So there couldn't be 11,000 deaths.
And you had 8,000 events or 8,000 deaths?
8,000 total events.
Total events.
Right. So total injuries. So there cannot be 11,000 deaths if there are only 8,000 total entries.
Can you give, can you give me the total deaths as the way you, you researched the?
I'd have to go pull, I'd have to go pull that information. But there are only, there's just a little over 8,000 total entries. Like all of the entries, like this person, you know, like everything that was entered into VAERS, there's only just over 8,000 of them.
And how many vaccines given?
You know, there's, I mean, some weeks there's millions. So we're talking, you know, there's millions and millions of vaccines that are given. We've given over 135,000 alone here in our jurisdiction.
But the, that 8,000 number you're talking about is over the course of.
Nationwide, yes. Since, US since, since, yes, since the beginning.
I, I would love it as a council, if we could receive maybe that data along with.
Sure.
You know, I do receive several emails a week, uh, with concerns that I feel are valid. And, you know, the vaccine and the rollout and how we're tracking it locally. And so, um, I want to be armed as best I can with actual confirmed facts.
Sure.
And there has to be somebody tracking these facts, even locally and, and of course nationwide. And so, um, I, I get that there's a disclaimer, but there's also a valid number there. And so maybe we can't get right on it, but I would love to be able to have that information and, and hopefully continue to bring us together as a community, knowing that we can be comfortable in what the reporting actually is. Cause our big deal is informed consent. I know you're stressing that. I know the city manager stresses that. So this data is really where a lot of people can weigh their risk and the reward. And, and that's all I'm after. I want everybody who wants to have a vaccine to, to be very well-informed and understand both the effects and the side effects.
Totally agree that it is about accurate data. So just to land that, can you just guide Casey or Jared specifically what data you want her to provide? Just want to make sure that we get that nailed down.
I think that if, sure, if we were looking at VAERS as the authority, that is a CDC database. It comes through the CDC as well as I understand it. And, and that if we can get a every two week update off of that VAERS, um, databank, then, then if it can be verified and if it's not verified, I think at least if we can watch it as a baseline, then we could, we could kind of begin to see a little bit more of what the big picture is.
I think to, Councilmember Stanley was asking, uh, or you were asking how many vaccinations, something like that. Uh, as of two days ago, the estimate is 342 million doses had been given in the United States. And as of two days ago, 163 million were fully vaccinated. Rex, it represents 49.7% of the country. And I don't know if that's talking about the fully vaccinated or, or doses given. I would think it's fully vaccinated, but it does not say very clearly. Percentage of population fully vaccinated is 49.7. So.
And then I think at least locally, we probably have a much better hold on, you know, if there's a way to decipher through this particular data as it relates to the Texas Panhandle. And that, and that's all we really want to watch is, is, you know, are we having any adverse, you know, serious effects, side effects?
Sure. We definitely want to know that. So I mean, I guess what we're asking then, Jared, is just can Casey bring that data, like the number of vaccines given locally?
Mm-hmm.
The number of events reported.
Right.
Locally and whether or not there are any deaths.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can do that, right?
I will look to see what, I mean, I know I can get the national numbers. I'll look to see what, how, how the query system will allow, how far down that will allow me to, to.
How granular.
Yeah, how granular.
By geography.
Our target will be to, our goal will be to try to be able to provide you that information on our public health district, which is our two county area.
Okay.
And then if we can give you broader data about the Panhandle, we will, but, but I don't know how manipulate, how, how much we can manipulate that data.
And I think even tracking the national database, just as though it is put out, you know, where everyone, anyone can go and look, um, that's very beneficial on a, on a every other week basis for us, even if we can't get the local data. So I, I, I want to be equipped when I get an email that says there's 45,000 deaths from the vaccines. I want to know like, no, this is actually the real number and, and this isn't or whatever. And, and I'm relying on you, um, much like the rest of our community to be able to sift through that. And I think you do a great job of, um, looking out over everybody. And, and so I, I hope that's part of it. And I think that's a good tool that we can have to move forward safely.
Okay. I can do that.
Hey, thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Casey, thank you very much. Item one C is a report on the Emerald Fire Department accreditation. Mr. City Manager.
All right. We got Chief Jason Mays to introduce the item, uh, but the real heavy lifter, uh, chief is going to introduce, uh, Chief Koba, uh, here in just a moment. So chief, 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 chief. I feel like there's a lot of chiefs in the room.
I always feel that way in the fire departments around.
First of all, he'll be glad that you got his name right. So.
I almost did it intentionally in other ways and said that you told me to do it that way.
He would believe it. Uh, first of all, thanks for everybody's time here today. Uh, mayor, council and city leaders, we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on our progress. What we're doing today is providing an update on our strategic plan goals. We have eight of those and presenting today will be District Chief David Koba. He serves a kind of a dual role with AFD as the B shift, one of two B shift shift commanders. And he's also serves as our accreditation manager. And he's our, he's our expert on all things accreditation and he's done, he's lifted a tremendous burden off this department by assuming that role. So I'll turn it over to David.
All right. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Councilman. Today I'm here to present on the Strategic Plan Goals and Objectives 2021 Update. Next slide, please. The strategic plan is one of three pillars within the accreditation process. The other two are the Community Risk Assessment, Standards of Cover, and the Fire and Emergency Services Self-Assessment Manual. Next slide, please. Goal number one is to improve internal communications to support the department's mission and values. The department began looking at an information portal called First Arriving this year. And it's basically a modular, uh, information portal that's displayed on a television screen at every station that will display relevant information to crews at the fire stations such as training, uh, weather, uh, staffing, baseline, uh, performance data, and also response data, real time as that alarm comes in. Next slide, please. Goal number two, maintain and improve an effective and efficient training program to support the department's mission. Uh, this year, the department purchased a new online delivery training system called Fire Rescue One. It improves the delivery of training. It improves the required reporting for state, uh, for the state reporting. And it also gives company officers and individuals a little more flexibility on how they do their training, how they complete that training and where they complete that training. Uh, it also serves, has several other tools to accomplish the training needs that our department has. Another thing we did this year is took our six week orientation program and narrowed it down to a three week program. And we're providing those probationary firefighters the most relevant and critical tasks they need to be assigned to a fire engine. And then that fire company that they're assigned to will complete the training throughout the rest of the year of that probationary firefighter. Next slide, please. Goal number three is to enhance our emergency medical service capabilities to better serve our community. Uh, it's been greatly enhanced with a Fire Rescue One train, uh, platform that we purchased. Uh, train division is now allowed to deliver customized training to each of our three certification levels that we have, which is EMT basic, advanced EMT, and EMT paramedic. We're continuing to utilize our field training officers, our FTOs, to deliver the hands-on skills training that's needed for all of, all, all firefighters in, that have an EMS certification and also particularly focusing on developing those new ALS providers and paramedic firefighters. In coordination with AMS and AFD's medical director, a third paramedic engine was launched this year, located at Station Seven at, uh, Grandin Emerald Boulevard East. And currently six members are attending the EMT paramedic program alongside with AMS. Next slide, please. Goal number four is to interact, educate, and inform the public on what we do and why we do it to improve transparency and visibility. The COVID-19 pandemic impacted the person, in-person, uh, interactions greatly. But since about March this year, we've been able to increase those, uh, interactions from youth all the way to adults and also begin other programs such as our fire extinguisher training that we, uh, that the public information program does deliver. Uh, department website is coming soon, which will allow everybody to be able to get on that website, get the information they need about what we are, who we are, and what we're doing. And we're continuing to utilize the social media platforms to deliver public information about, about what's going on in the department, about the staff, and about also, uh, any incident information that's happening at that moment. Next slide, please. Goal number five is to develop a greater systems of oversight, management, and planning of physical resources and technology to ensure fiscal responsibility and future sustainability. Our logistics chief's, chief created an e-store this year, which is located on the city intranet site. And what that's done is improved the way we, uh, the company's order station supplies for maintenance and cleaning supplies. And it also improved the tracking of those supplies and any costs associated with those. We shifted our annual medical evaluations from an, uh, off duty, uh, task to an on-duty task. And we're able to take those overtime funds that we were using in the past and now be able to utilize that for other areas and needs in our department, such as software, training opportunities, and equipment. The executive staff continues to, uh, present on capital improvement plan requests. And, uh, the compliance program, uh, continues to monitor, uh, response data, looking for any kind of, uh, performance gaps to not have that, uh, that impact what physical resources, uh, could close that gap, such as fire stations, apparatus, or equipment. Goal number six is to enhance workforce development at all levels to better serve our community. The Fire Rescue One platform has definitely increased that. Once again, it was a great purchase. What we can, the train division now can customize learning tracks based on certifications. So such as a hazmat program personnel get this training, airplane rescue, firefighters can get this customized training, uh, technical rescue, and so forth. That's been a great platform for us to really dial in that training. We made a couple of positional task book updates this year to firefighter and district chief levels. The firefighters were small changes. The district chief level, uh, included a job shadow program, then also a, uh, more specific dialing in on, uh, focusing in on the major programs within the department where that eligible DC would be able to be exposed to that, particularly the administrative tasks, if that promotion did occur, to get them prepared for that. And then also new, uh, state curriculum training opportunities have opened up where firefighters can now, uh, achieve a Texas Commission on Fire Protection certifications and driver operator and pumper, uh, fire instructor and fire officer certifications. Next slide, please. Develop a strategy, this is goal number seven, develop a strategy to build and maintain an effective workforce to support the AFD mission, vision, and values that reflects the community we serve. We have an applicant shortage now that impacts staffing right now and, and most likely in the future unless we, uh, come up with a plan. We're going to focus on the unrepresented areas of the city as we develop, develop a recruiting, hiring, and training process for a new department fire academy. And we're going to continue to mon- monitor the performance gaps that are personnel performance gaps, uh, within, within the city and what people, what firefighters are needed in areas to be on those fire apparatuses at that station to close that gap. Next slide, please. Goal number eight is to achieve international accreditation, which we did in 2018. We're going to continue progress in meeting this strategic plan goals and objectives, which this is our fourth update to this plan. There'll be a new plan, uh, entire new plan, uh, next year, whenever, uh, prior around the spring of next year. We're going to con- continue to approve the process of the way the compliance, uh, program performs by the addition of the new staff that, uh, we've, we officially launched a compliance program. Uh, I'm the manager of it and then we have a lot more staff to help assist me and the department with all the things that we've got to accomplish with accreditation and, uh, ISO rating. We did get our 2020 annual compliance report approved and we just submitted our 2021 report a couple of weeks ago and I anticipate that being approved in the next couple of months. Next slide. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Council, were you having questions for Chief Koba? It's an impressive amount of work. Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, sir, chief. So, um, Emerald College currently has a, a program, correct?
Yes, sir.
This will go along with enhancing that and giving you guys a, another tool in order to recruit and bring people in and train them up. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna let the chief speak on, on this.
Yeah, part of any emergency response is we, we try to anticipate any challenges that we may see coming on the horizon. And what we've had is we've had an applicant shortage. We've had, uh, struggles in our area on passing the state exam for firefighter certification. And all we're trying to do is anticipate if we're ever green lighted the opportunity to form and to start up an Emerald Fire Department Academy to run in conjunction with AC Academy. We're just trying to look at this and stave off. If, if there's any kind of a shortage there, as we have kind of currently seen a dip, that we will have a way to, to meet that need and making sure that we have four folks on every fire truck.
I think, I think a, a good way to phrase it is Emerald College is a huge positive partner for the city in so many different ways. Fire is just one of them. Dr. Larry Hart is a great leader for that organization. He has a great management team, leadership team, uh, working with him. Uh, if, uh, we can facilitate that program, uh, and help them be successful in a way that we are able to fully staff the fire department, then obviously we're going to do everything we can to make that happen. If we're not getting adequate numbers, we have to look creatively to see how we can make sure that we can fully staff the fire department because we have staffing requirements. Uh, they're a part of that solution. Uh, and, and, uh, we would only go a different, uh, uh, an independent route if we just weren't able to get enough numbers out of the Emerald College program. Uh, but we're working with them to help see if we can, uh, uh, play a positive role in making that happen. But we have to plan. The last thing we can do is just be short on firefighters because it's a, it is a, we can make it up through overtime for a short period of time, but we'll hit burnout at, at a certain point with our team. So we got to make sure that we're adequately staffed to be able to do everything we're supposed to do through the fire department. So this is not saying we want to do one thing or another. It is recognizing that we have to do one thing or another, you know?
Understand. And that goes kind of hand in hand with AC and the, the APD, correct? And we, we, we have a APD program academy here and AC has one?
Correct.
And those don't conflict? And so this is somewhat modeled in the same way, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then it sounded a little bit like you kind of got a budget worked out in there of, of looking at some potential costs and being able to ramp this up. So am I hearing you correctly that, that somewhere in there, we're spending some money on the backside that we, we could spend on the front end and train and bring in some firefighters, uh, with hopefully a break even to our budget?
Yes, sir. Everything that we've done, we're, we're trying to be as cost neutral as possible. If we can find savings, just like any city department, if there's anything that we can find under that proverbial couch cushion that we're, that we could reallocate, such as the moving things, our, our physicals off duty, where we're paying time and a half, usually a minimum of two hours to get blood work in and later two hours for a physical examination, we can bundle that money towards areas of need that are currently, that we have. And then something that's serious, such as, uh, if, if we ever needed to offset the cost, that would be initiated and starting up our own academy.
I think there's costs to our team and to our organization, uh, no matter which way we go, whether we're, uh, focused on, uh, helping get, uh, uh, adequate numbers of passing students through the AC program or doing our own program. Last thing we want to do is make a unilateral decision that doesn't include, uh, AC in what we're doing because what we do does affect Emerald College. What they're doing affects the city of Emerald. We have a symbiotic relationship and we've got to make sure that we're communicating with them and we will, uh, continue. We've been doing that exhaustively for the last couple of years and we'll continue to do that. But we have also, uh, estimated both the costs of contributing to their program and, uh, uh, doing a, an academy ourselves. There are benefits of, of both, uh, and, and we're, we have the cost benefit analyses on both of those. Um, we'll work through. We'll work through this next six months or so to really help identify what the way forward's going to have to be. We do need to make sure that in whatever we're doing, we're taking proactive and, I don't want to say aggressive, that's too harsh of a word, but proactive and forward-leaning steps to make sure that we're taking steps to look like our community. We want to recruit women. We want to recruit firefighters of color. We want to recruit and look like our community, look like everyone we're looking at out here in the audience and everyone who's watching us on TV. So that's a consideration as well.
Chief, do we have any women on our department force?
We do not. Our last entrance exam, we did have one woman on that did successfully pass the test out of the 12. And we're in the evaluation process. They were able to pass the test, so that's step one. Then there's the physical agility test, and so our fingers are crossed that she'll make it successfully through that.
Wow. In the past, have we had women serve in our department?
We have.
Yeah.
It's been a very, very short list and one that we're wanting to do our part in every way that we can to, again, like City Manager mentioned, better reflect our community.
Yeah. Well, we absolutely appreciate any cost-savings ideas that you guys come up with. I thought of a question for Chief Koba with regard to accreditation. Are we required to keep four men on our trucks, or can we be accredited at three?
Okay, so within the accreditation process, what you're looking for is a continuous improvement of where you're at today. So shortly, the short answer, whatever one you would be able to work with, four-person staffing is going to be the best staffing based on numerous ways of way we cross fire trucks. So looking at it from a perspective of every fire station has either a specialty truck, a grass unit and an engine, a hazmat unit and an engine, ARF units, or technical rescue. And so the four-person crew allows us to be able to split that up and respond to whatever incident we're going to. That's going to be the best plan? That's going to be the best plan to follow?
Agreed. It is definitely the best plan. But would we lose accreditation if we went back to three-man trucks?
You'd have to look at it from a perspective of where you're at now.
I should say, three-person trucks. Maybe the change should start with me, chief. Not three-man trucks, but three-person trucks.
How would you build a, improve, provide that same level of response with three persons on a truck as opposed to four, which is going to be very difficult because at that point, what you're looking at with accreditation is especially the standards of cover. So where that station's at, how many people, what type of apparatus they have, how many people are at the station, and how fast they can get to that incident. And we look at all six emergency incidents. So you have fire, EMS, wildland, hazmat, ARF, and technical rescue. And all of those have different critical tasks that need to be performed, and that's heavy on the person-specific. And then when you're looking at benchmark standard times on, from the NFPA, of what we should be able to do, that's what we use our benchmark standard times on, overtime segments of turnout time, response time, drive time, and then the total effective response force to get there. So you could do it, but it would take more fire trucks with less people on it, and it would be hard to get it in that same way.
Yeah. We definitely want to be in a position where we're providing the best service for our city, for sure. Any idea on the cost differential if we were to make that change?
From four to three?
Mm-hmm.
I do not run any of those numbers.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much for, any other questions, counsel? We appreciate, we really appreciate the work that you guys do.
There are accredited three-person departments in the state of Texas. However, we are in so much better position to be able to get that accreditation with the four-person apparatus, like Chief Koba said, because we can attack a fire immediately if we needed to. However, our policy doesn't coincide with what I just said right now, I don't believe. But it does put us in a better position to gain that accreditation. However, I just didn't want to imply that three-person trucks can't get accredited. They are, some are. But we are put in a better position to be able to do it. And we'll find out what the cost differential is.
Great. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 1D, Thompson Park Pool Update.
All right, we've got Director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Kishuba, to talk to us about progress over there, the opening over there, and also a little bit of bad news. So, Michael?
Mayor and Counsel, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just wanted to give a brief update on Thompson. I've got a little bit of mixed emotions today. So we'll start with the good news. On Friday of last week, we did a soft opening to train staff. And then we were able to open the facility to the public Saturday morning with the ribbon cutting. So we were excited to finally open the facility. While we were able to open the pool on the facility inside, there's still work to be done outside. So Wiley and his crews are still working on the landscaping and some other touch-up work around the site, things like punch list items, site work, landscaping, things like that. Just as a brief update on the items that we do have out there, we do have our leisure pool with the zero-entry area. We have the sun's shelf where you can sit in the water in about four inches of water. We've got the volleyball and basketball areas that are both in that leisure pool. In the Lazer River, we have the vortex, and we have the hydro jet areas. We've got the two slides. We've got shade cabanas, concessions. And we also have tubes and life jackets free of charge for those that are at the facility. Our hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The full day pass is from 11:00 AM to 4:30. We have a half-day from 2:00 to 4:30. And then we have an evening swim from 5:00 to 7:00. So the full day is $10, and then the half-day is $5, and then the evening swim is also $5. So that's the good news. We're open. There's still some work to be done on the site, but we're working with Wiley to get that done as quickly as possible. On the flip side, we've been open less than 72 hours, and we had somebody break into the facility last night with about $2,000 in damaged or stolen goods, including things like damaged computers, food items, chips, sodas, candies that were stolen, a bunch of department-branded stuffed tote bags, cups that were for sale. We're currently reviewing the camera systems on-site, and we're trying to assist APD with their investigation. So we're asking anybody in the public to contact APD if they've got information at the non-emergency number. It's 806-378-3038. We have done a Facebook post, and within the last two hours, it's reached over 42,000 people with over, probably 21,000 already engaged in that post. So obviously, we're excited to open, but we're also very saddened by the fact that we've already been broken into. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor and Counsel, I think that you all would probably agree with me. It is, I don't know what the right word is, frustrating, very angering when one of our own, likely, I don't know, probably a resident of Amarillo is breaking into an Amarillo facility, an amenity, not a facility, an amenity that we built for our own community, paid for by our own community. It costs our own community money to, when someone, one of our own breaks into it and damages it. It is frustrating. I know I'm probably not putting any words in your mouths that you all aren't thinking, but for what it's worth, we're going to do what we can to find them and to safeguard the asset that we built.
Well, I thought it was a delightful event on Saturday morning, and I was thrilled to see kids out there with their parents. And I made a new friend, Felipe, from Colorado, who was in Amarillo visiting his aunt, and he was excited to spend the day at the pool. As a matter of fact, they came to swim, and I guess in the conversation of the gates getting open, they decided to go back home and get more of their family and bring them for making memories and having fun together, too. So, you know, Michael, my words to you would just be, don't be discouraged. This has been a long project. You had tons of support there from your Parks and Rec Board, their wonderful community servants who have wise words to add into how the Parks and Rec Department does its job. And you just had a tremendous amount of support from the community. And I've had so many people ask me, well, does it have deep water? And how long do you think those slides will last? And did you get in and actually try? I mean, there's a lot of chatter around town about the pool. So people are excited to have a new facility, and it is okay for us to have nice things. And I'm sad about this, but your team will be right on it, and APD will be right on it, and we'll move past whoever made this bad choice and hopefully have a chance to have a conversation with them about not making that choice again. But don't be discouraged. Counsel?
It's a beautiful pool. That's all I've got to say.
Anybody else? I appreciated all of you making time on Saturday morning to be there. Good job, Michael. Okay. Agenda Item 1E is, I know everybody's been waiting breathlessly to get to this item. So exciting, policy. You know, the council, four years ago, when the 2017 council was elected, embarked on creating and putting down some solid written policy that would govern the city council. And we're just periodically going back through that and looking at different provisions, especially, it's fun to do that right now because we have a new council member who wasn't there for the journey of doing all that. So we appreciate Councilmember Stanley and how hard he's working to learn all of the things it takes to be on council, truly. I want to say to you guys, he is spending so much time and working so hard to be up to serving the city. And I just want to give you a compliment, Cole, being really intentional about doing that.
Thank you.
So this policy, policy number two is the council staff linkage. The first one was really just council's lane. This one defines our lane with regard to the city manager. And I think it's really important, just as a lead-in, to read that first paragraph, that as council's single official link to operating city government, the city manager's performance will be considered synonymous with the organizational performance as a total. So essentially, the only employee that we have is Jared. Now, our org chart also gives us the municipal court judge, but really, Jared is responsible for operating the entire city, and he answers to the city council for whether or not he gets that done. And I think it's important that when you look at this policy at 2.2, it says all council authority is delegated to staff. It's delegated through the city manager so that all authority and accountability of staff, as far as we, the city council, are concerned, is considered to be the authority and the accountability of the city manager. So just that concept really hit home for me when we were doing this process with the analogy of getting in the taxicab, that it's like the city's on a journey, and the cab is going to take us there. The council gets in the backseat and says, you know, we want to go to 10th and North Street. And it's the taxi driver decides whether he's going to take two rights and a left or two lefts and a right to get there. And the city manager is the driver of the cab. So we decide the destination, but he decides operationally how we're going to arrive at that destination. And I think that's what policy two is really all about. So questions, thoughts, anything that, as you guys read through it, that you wanted to revisit or touch on again? It does, as its last point on page 11, under 2.3, Item 4, it says, "At a minimum annually, the council will institute a formal evaluation of the city manager. This evaluation will consider only monitoring data, as defined here, as it's appeared over the intervening year." So this upcoming evaluation of the city manager will mark his five-year anniversary with the city. And I have mentioned to Jared, but I haven't yet mentioned to Mitch, that I think it would be a good idea, but I was wondering if you all had input on this, to do a 360 evaluation, something that we would ask his peers and his coworkers, you know, how's he doing at the five-year mark? It's more of an, it's a little bit of a different tack than what we've taken in years prior because it's more work-intensive, and there's a little bit of cost involved to gather all that data. But I think it would be valuable input to Jared and to us. But I wanted to hear what you guys had to say about it. Yes?
Yes.
I think that would be good.
Okay? Yeah?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay. I do want to say, Mitch, I'd like to tap Kevin Starbuck, whether he's willing to do it now before he leaves, probably not before Friday, but I think he would be very, it would be very important to have Kevin's feedback in that 360, just because he works so closely with Jared, how we can get you to commit to do that for us, Kevin, even after you're gone. I'll let Mitch work out the details, but, okay, I think that's important.
And Mayor, I had Item 4 highlighted in my governor's book as well, but I also had Item 4 highlighted, which I like a lot, where it says, "The city manager works for the council as a body, and no individual council member may give direction." So I like that because we operate as a team, pretty much, when we're giving our directions to the city manager, so.
Yeah, and I think Jared's good at that. He softly reminds us that we operate as a body and that he takes his direction from us as a body. I think that's great. Anything else there that you want to highlight or discuss?
Nope, that's all I had.
Councilmember Smith, anything?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Stanley?
No, ma'am.
Okay. You know, we're going through this kind of at a slow pace so that over the next six weeks or so, we will have touched each provision and had a chance to discuss it, ask questions, make changes. The destination is to ultimately have a vote on this, where we're affirming this policy. So I'm not trying to rush through that at all. I want to give everybody time to read, think on it, but we'll just tackle one policy at a time and try to get through that. Okay, if there's nothing else there, then we'll finish Item 1E and move on to Item 1F, Partners for Development Progress. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. This is, everyone goes, what is this? It's kind of ambiguous. Well, what it is, is partnering together with all of our vested stakeholders inside the city, both the organization, developers, realtors, builders, home buyers, everybody in town that has a vested interest in having homes available for people that want to buy a home inside the city of Amarillo. Everyone's seen what's going on nationwide, statewide, and certainly locally. If you've tried to buy a house lately, you know that they're going above ask, and they're going above ask because supply is limited. That is certainly a local reality, but as Kevin's finding, it's a statewide reality. It's also a national, nationwide reality. So how do we take a proactive, intentional approach to creating the environment where development can take place at the pace that it needs to take place and the pace the market will support? The way to do that is to work together to modify our development process so that it creates a very clear way forward for developers, for builders, for realtors to sell houses, and for homeowners, for citizens to buy houses. So this process is all about that. It's not one thing. It's not just talking about impact fees. It's not just talking about oversizing. It's not just talking about rough proportionality. It's not just talking about how we construct infrastructure to support residential developments. It's all those things. So what we want to talk to the council about is how do we bring the stakeholders together? And it's not just, certainly, it's really not employees at all. Although they have a role, it is all those different people that I mentioned earlier, along with council members. So we wanted to get your feedback, and Mayor, I want to throw it to you to let you give some thoughts. We have Floyd, we have Kyle, we have Andrew. We have a number of team here that will be key players in this process. But the process is led by council and led by our community. So we want to make sure that you all are giving us guidance as we step into this over the course of the next year and beyond.
So Counsel, I think this is an opportunity for us to discuss how do we want to move forward? Do we want to move forward by creating a process that has a citizens committee? I think, Mr. City Manager, typically, a city would hire a consultant to walk through this?
Yes. In this process, what we would propose is that we use an outside consultant, an engineering firm. A lot of engineering firms do this, and they will help us design the development process. But we don't want to do that in a vacuum or just look at what some other city did and modify it for Amarillo. We want stakeholder input so that we can make sure that whatever process results is something that reflects the will, the preferences, and is customized for our local stakeholders. And it's not just taxpayers, it's not just builders, you know, I mentioned all those different stakeholders, but it's not any one of them. It's everybody working together to figure out what's going to work for Amarillo. There are a lot of different models that work that we can use as templates or as something to discuss as we go through the process. But they would provide that local hand on the wheel that guides the consultant as they draw up what ultimately will be adopted by city council.
So what do you think, Counsel?
So Mayor, could we have like a representative from each of the different partners? from each of the different partnerships that we have, serve on a committee, and they would be able to provide input to the consultants, you know, as they develop the process? So if we had representation across the city of that, those groups of partners, I think that would be great.
Partners, you mean like the Realtors Association, Builders Association?
Just have one or two representatives because you'd... Because you don't want your committee to, to be too huge because in my opinion, you don't get much done when you've got 30 people that you're working with, so.
Okay. What do you think, Mr. Stanley?
I like the direction Frida's going. I, I guess to back up a step, annexation, growth, infrastructure, things like that, that could be miles away from, from where we are, right? That's what we're looking at. How, how do we get there? Is that our original challenge we're facing here, Jared?
Yeah, we're talking, and we'll talk later on discussion about infill development, some other tools we can use to facilitate infill development. But this is really what we're talking about, is how do we grow the city where it make, it's financially sustainable for both the people that would be in the city in the future, but, but also with particular attention to the people that already live in the city. Do they pay for that growth? Or does development pay for the cost of development? How does that work? So we need to make sure that we're having that conversation. As we have, we have eaten up the low-hanging fruit with regard to annexation over the last handful of years. And we look at some of the future annexations that are coming, and we see some of those, at least according to our current development guidelines, they look like they could be in excess, well in excess, of $25 million upside down for the city. We've got to make sure that, that we facilitate growth. We also have to make sure that that's not on the backs of our existing tax... Or, that, that phrase is like, I have an opinion. We also need to take into account our existing taxpayers as we consider how we do that. Probably a much more politically correct way of phrasing that. But it, it is a very important consideration and discussion to have. And maybe everyone's going to say, no, we want to keep doing it the way we're doing it. But we are somewhat, to, to an extent, at an impasse with our current development standards and, and how they currently have the city paying the cost of that infrastructure extension. However, it also says that it only, the city only pays if they have the money to do it. And we know we won't have the money to do it for the next couple of decades, at least. So we're kind of at a development impasse. So we have to answer that question so that we can have a very clear way forward for people that want to develop and build that is financially sustainable and, and acknowledges those financial challenges that the city has and we know we have, and we've, we've articulated over the last handful of years. So I, I think that's probably, that, Mayor would say that sounded a little bit bureaucratic, but it is a way of phrasing our, characterizing our current challenge with a catch-22, chicken-and-egg kind of thing.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, go ahead.
So Jared, can you answer a question for me in the way of, do we already know what our challenges are? And, and are we at a place where we could hire a consultant? Or should we go back to our stakeholders, developers, builders, citizens, try to identify what the challenges could be with a couple of these future proposed annexation sites and developments? And then be able to better go to a consultant at that time and give direction?
I would, at the risk of putting words in Floyd, Andrew, or others' mouths, we have, we have picked that pretty clean as far as understanding what our current challenges are, working with our developers to make sure that we can do as much as we possibly can right now. Now is the time. We are ready to do a facilitated process with an engineer who does this, who can help us find a sustainable way forward. And I do not mean, and I'm not saying that I'm against the environment, I'm not talking about an environmentally sustainable way forward. I'm talking about a financially sustainable way forward. Floyd, you got a little bit, you want to add there? You look like you're championing the bit.
The Mayor and Council, Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. Councilmember, one thing I would point out on that question to answer that directly is we are poised to do it with a consultant at this point. If you look in the proposed budget, we have the update to the comprehensive plan. We are looking at all of our plans and specifications. But those comprehensive plans, they start with the Planning Department Comprehensive Plan and goes into each discipline, whether that's arterials, water, wastewater. Those plans are all in the process of being updated. And we relish the opportunity to interact with those partners in this process. And the time is ripe for all of that to occur at the same time.
And, and yeah, doing those things con, at the same time, will be a benefit to all of those plans for them to be, being drafted at the same time. However, it is necessary to identify the financially viable way forward for development because we are at a point where we will start grinding, I don't want to say grinding to a halt, grinding to a significant reduction in our capacity to be able to add new housing inside the city limits and it'll be pushing housing outside the city limits. It's already happening. And when we do that, when that, when that effect happens, what you see is much lower density, many fewer houses being able to be built per section. And what we need is more density and the capacity to be able to add houses without extending our borders dramatically beyond. Because that, that, that expansion of area for the city of Amarillo needs to be managed in a way where we're not, there's a balance between density and area. So the more area you have with the lower density, the more cost per acre you're spending on infrastructure.
Do you have, have you taken RFPs, RFQs already from engineers? Do you have local engineer that you've worked with in the past or somebody you're going to recommend?
We have not on this topic. And we are poised and ready to go with a scope to initiate Phase One, which would be interacting with our citizens, these groups, elected officials, and staff to evaluate it and then make recommendations for a phased approach. We anticipate a Phase Two and a Phase Three, but we're not going to define that in this request for qualifications. This RFQ is going to go out based off experience and ability to do all three phases, but focused on evaluating where we're at, what those recommendations are that that consultant would come up with, with all of that interaction combined.
I think, granted, salt on local engineers or local providers because most, we do have a preference for local vendors. I would also say that, the caveat to that is, most of our large, either national or statewide, engineering firms do have offices inside the city of Amarillo, so they are considered local. So just, just wanted to share those perspectives.
We have a, we have a standing pre-approved list of consultants. However, we reserve the right to go out and advertise, and that's what this one would be under special circumstances. The scope of this would, we would just advertise separately from the pre-approved list or use that. But the locals and the nationals are on both of those lists and the opportunity to do that. And it's based off qualifications. And this is heavy in qualifications of combining state law with development, with local policies, and making recommendations. So it is a very complex issue that requires a lot of history and experience in performance of this type of task.
And one of the key considerations to finding a company that has experience working with a city of our size, with the complexities that come with a larger city. So we do have local companies that can do it. We also have companies that, that will apply, I'm sure, that are not, not solely local. So we'll have to weigh all those things as we get those proposals in.
Councilmember Stanley, would you be willing to, two things? I always hate adding things to your list to do because I know, small business owner, you're a busy guy. But I'm wondering if you would be willing to meet with Floyd and Andrew, just talk through some of the work that they've been doing, the preliminary work over the last probably 18 months?
Yes.
That I know I have watched you guys do, be involved in conversations about it, and just listen to the steps that they follow through. But then I'm wondering, too, like, how would you structure? Because while this process is getting started, I don't see any reason why you couldn't. You have great relationships in the building community. And that's what we're really targeting, is making sure we have the housing we need to support the business growth and the regional growth that we have coming into the city. So I wonder what's on the top of builders' minds? And they'll definitely get representation if we're moving toward a citizens committee, realtors, builders, other type people. But I think we could get special benefit out of a group formed through your relationships that, you know, what are they thinking while this process is coming together? And, and you're getting up to speed with Floyd and Andrew? Would you be willing to, to do that for us?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be willing to do that and, and get educated on that. And to steal a word from Mr. Miller here, concurrently, you know, with, with the direction Frida's going, I don't know that we couldn't run these concurrent. Where I'm getting up to date, these reports may could go to the entire council in the way of Phase One. That way, we know what direction, you know, staff is already recommending to go. And then we'll be in front of the eight ball on this deal instead of behind it when it comes to putting out the RFQ.
Absolutely. I mean, what we don't want is to shoot an eight ball from the council room out into the community at all. In some ways, I feel like one got shot a while ago and it's been bouncing around the table, knocking balls in the hole. And, and now we're, we're the ones kind of left holding it in a housing shortage, saying, what do we need to do for decades going forward? And, and when we, when we form this committee, I do think we need people on there who perhaps live in older neighborhoods around the city and understand that if we don't change our policy, it increases the burden. It falls right on our, on our property taxpayer. So just balancing all of the voices at that table, that's, I think, our goal. So if you think there's work to be done after meeting with Floyd and Andrew and you want to have a group of builders or whoever you think needs to kind of kickstart this, I, I think I'm fine with that and would guess that council would be okay with that. Howard, what do you think? Howard may want to do the same thing at the Realtors Association.
Well, I'd say, I've been on this council four years and that's probably been the most complaints I've gotten. Because I'm a realtor, been in realtor 41 years, I hear complaints about development people. And so I look forward to this. We need, we need to address this and come to some conclusions on how we're going to proceed. The Realtors definitely will want representation on the committee. The builders will, maybe the apartment association. And so I'm for moving ahead.
You know, as to Mayor Pro, Tim Frida's point, the committee needs to be rightly sized so it can do the work. But maybe these feeder committees into that are going to generate a broader scope of ideas and suggestions. And then off of that committee might come one person to come representing the industry, the Realtors, the builders, apartment owners. So if, if you guys are willing to reach out, Howard, are you willing to reach out to the Realtors to kind of start this?
Yes.
And then, Councilmember Stanley, willing to reach out to the building community?
Yep. I'd like to meet with Andrew and Floyd and then be able to go out and bring it back to you.
Okay. I think, council, it might be great if we could agree on, you know, what you guys are doing are industry-specific working groups. And so you're wanting to know ideas, steering, questions, concerns. It is, there's really no limit to the information that you're seeking. But I think the best term for those might be working groups leading toward industry having a seat at the citizens committee that walks through the process with the consultant. And I, I think the timing on, on that is actually okay. So y'all can get right to that work while we're still finalizing the selection of the consultant. Floyd, what do you think that timeframe looks like? Has Trent blessed it?
Yeah, it'll have to go to Trent's blessing. But we would anticipate in two to three months having that here in front of council for a vote.
Okay, yeah, we've got plenty of time then. Yeah, I think y'all have got time to do those.
I could add one group that I think, lending institutions might be involved as well as a group.
Yeah. Okay. So we're taking notes on that. Other, other industry groups, council, that we're thinking about? Realtors, builders, bankers? You said apartment association developers?
A lot of different types of persons we need to include. And we also need to manage the number so that it's a, can be a productive process because as you grow, it can get a little bit difficult to move.
Okay. Council, I'd like to ask you, if we're working toward that citizens committee to work with a consultant, perhaps from, we would have a single representative from each one of those five industry groups you just mentioned. But, and maybe your working groups would select that. But I'd like for y'all to be thinking about a short list of folks that we could, the five of us could each make a short list, submit that to the city manager for them to put together a, a community, a group of people that reflects our community well.
So, Mayor, what's your definition of a short list? Because, you know, we all have short lists that are longer than others.
Five to 10 people, at, at least five. Again, when, when we put these committees together, we look at lots of different things. We want a variety of ages, 20-year-olds up to older. A variety of neighborhoods that they reside in, people from every quadrant of the city. A variety of perspectives, whether that's industry perspective or even ethnicity. And so there are lots of different things that you want to bring to the committee. And if we, if we have a list from each council member that we can use as a resource to build that committee, the more names you put on the list, the, I really think the more diverse it allows our committee to be. But yet, we want those names to be tied to input from the council. So that's, that's, I, you know, we've kind of been doing this for four years now. I really think that's a good way to do it.
I have a question. You name five groups.
I did.
Five. I got four.
Okay. Realtors, builders, banks, developers, and apartment association.
I'm curious whether subcontractors, major subcontractors should be represented.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah?
Yes, sir. I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think so. So plumbers, electricians?
Yep.
Who else? Roofers?
Concrete workers.
Concrete. We missing any subs, Cole?
The only people we're leaving out are architects, engineers, things like that, design professionals. But you can, you can gather most of that in your Builders Association, Developers groups.
Okay. Floyd, Andrew, anything coming to your mind that we're not thinking of?
The only other one I thought of on our list was other local government entities, school districts, government entities could be involved, water districts or those types of things.
You think the water district needs to be involved? Okay. And I know that Floyd and Andrew and Jared have had conversations with, with other government entities. And I think it will be really important for us to at least give them visibility about any changes we're making in the process that we're going through. And we really value partnership here. You know, our city sits on two counties and sits close to Canyon, and we're developing into each other. So I think it's really important for us to include them in the process, even if they're not actually sitting at the table. But certainly, that's what everybody has in mind.
And we have had conversations with all of our neighboring jurisdictions, including Potter County, Randall County, and city of Canyon. Canyon is working forward on something already that will be consistent with what we end up considering as well, in, in some form or fashion. Potter County and Randall County will be working, I believe, at least indications are, simultaneously on, on the similar project. We initially had looked at a single project that would have all four jurisdictions partnering together on it. However, because our requirements are so different, city of Amarillo and Canyon are very different in size. City of Amarillo and Canyon are very different in size and scope. However, some of the things we're talking about are going to be very similar. Again, with Potter and Randall County, some of the things we're talking about are similar. However, our responsibilities and authority is completely different from a county authority with regard to development and a municipal authority and responsibility with regard to development. So understanding that we had, it was so difficult to get a one unified project to address all of those very different jurisdictions' needs, we're going to instead work simultaneously instead of through the same contract. That's the hope. We have been in communication with those different jurisdictions. And we will continue to maintain a high level of communication with them. But we cannot make any, I don't want to make any type of statements as to what they will do because they will decide what they do.
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we know we're at a course where we need to, in good stewardship, answer some of these questions going forward. And to the extent they want to be involved, they'll be involved in their own individual.
Coordinate as much as possible with the end goal being that, and you phrased this best earlier this morning when you said that, you know, that our goal is to make sure that whatever comes out of this, the standards are complementary so that somebody developing in Randall County is not going to run afoul of something when they go to Amarillo, is not going to run afoul of something when they go to Potter County or City of Canyon. They need to be complementary standards.
Okay. So then, Jared, what I hear is that Howard is going to reach out to the Realtors about a working group. Cole, going to reach out to the builders about a working group? Yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we may need to reach out or at least develop a system for reaching out on everybody else that we have on the list. And that can...
Let me reach out to developers, builders, subcontractors. I can catch those.
You want all the subs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that just got easier. So what that leaves, Cole, is banks, the apartment association, and other government entities? Yeah? Okay.
I'd be glad to reach out to the apartment association.
Okay.
So if y'all would, whatever y'all find as far as names or recommendations you would like to submit, just if you can, whether it's five, ten, or however many, submit those to me and we'll compile and collate all that for the mayor.
So I think maybe looking at having names back in thirty days or so. That gives time to do some working group. And everybody knows we're starting to work on this, so their juices get to flowing and thinking about it. And it gives y'all time to do working group meetings if you want. Certainly, if you want any city staff with you in those working group meetings, somebody to take notes or answer questions, I think it'd be a great idea for staff to be available. Okay, but we're targeting a thirty-day.
So tell me what you want. You want ten names from each group?
Yeah. Well, I want ten names from each council member. And then ideally, off of this big group of industry reps, we would have one name. So I'm glad we're clarifying that, Howard. From the Realtors, I think it would be a good idea to have one name. And that doesn't necessarily have to be on your list. But what I want to do is make sure each council person has a person or two at the table along with these industry reps and that it represents citywide what our community looks like. So if you want to say from the Realtors Working Group, these three people were willing to, you know, volunteered to serve, probably one of them, there would be room for on the committee. And it's going to be a sizable committee. It can't be thirty people. But, you know, if we could land it somewhere around fifteen, I think that would be workable but still representing a lot of our city.
So you want us...
Y'all suggest anything differently?
You want us to have a working group meeting?
Yes. To listen, to cast out the vision for what's coming with the consultant and to say, as we're getting started, what are your questions? What are your concerns? What do you want to make sure that we steer the consultant to or steer the consultant away from? So this is their chance to kind of throw anything out there. And that's what I heard you asking for, Cole.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's right. In the way of, if we get the consultant first and then we go and we kind of get our direction and then we go sit down with, you know, our community and say, "Well, this is what we think. What do y'all think?" We're already behind the eight ball. So this way, if we go out and get people that can come and sit down and say, "Hey, this is what I ran into last time. These are the issues we always run into." You know, "Hey, I have an idea of how we could work together." Then we're able to bring those back to the consultant and develop a better plan.
Okay. So working groups, going to bring back a lot of feedback and ideas. We don't really have an agenda when we meet with those working groups other than for them to understand that this process is about to start. It will involve a consultant. And we really want them to be a part of it. And we don't want them to be limited in how they interact or bring value to the process. Yeah? Okay. Then in addition to the working group feedback, looking for a list of people, names, citizens that you think would do a good job serving on that committee. And there can be overlap, but need that from each council member within the next thirty days. Yeah. Floyd, Andrew, does that work on y'all's timetable? Okay, good. I think this is, we're headed in a good direction on this then. Thank y'all for that feedback. Anything else, Jared?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to item 1G, reports from city council members serving on outside boards. We will pass over parks and rec and beautification until Dr. Sauer joins us next time. Do we, Howard, have a report from LGC?
Yes. We met this last week. And briefly, our stores presented, I'm going to call a rough draft of a budget. Went into quite a bit of detail. It'll be tweaked. But the next meeting, we'll probably be adopting a budget. And then we heard reports from Tony Inzer dealing with the ballpark. We had the manager of the hotel there. Heard about the parking garage activity. It's increased a lot there because of the ballgames. Hotel said they're having very good business. Filled up. I have a son that came and tried to get a place at the hotel and couldn't do it because they were filled up. But Tony Inzer's pleased with the attendance at the ballgames. Not the record of the team yet. But that's the gist of what we talked about.
That's a good report. Any major changes to the budget or substantially the same as last year?
We'll find out next month.
Laura's holding you in suspense?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, Council, for Howard about that? Howard, you want to do pedestrian and bicycle safety?
I will. The Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Committee met June 21st for a regular meeting. And we heard a report from the Police Department on high accident locations. And they're going to be back at our next meeting and give more information. That's how we started developing some locations where we needed crossings at Amarillo Boulevard. We're going to want to have Tech Dot is in charge of Amarillo Boulevard. And so they're planning on putting crossing guards at three places. Intersection North Garfield and North Arthur and Amarillo Boulevard, North Roberts and North Wilson and Amarillo Boulevard, and at North Bivin Street. So we're glad to get those. That's what we found out from a previous report from the Police Department about accidents. And their, a contract has been awarded to do those. And so they'll be starting. It won't be next week, probably. We've got bike lanes put out on North Colter from Fairway Drive to Loop 335. New bike lanes on Julian from Interstate 40 to the north. Bike lanes connecting Julian to Fifteenth, Fifteenth to Johnson and Johnson to Hodestown. Bike lanes connecting Rails to Trails to Hodestown on Seventh and Eighth. So we hadn't got them all marked with the bicycle logo on there yet, but created that way. Want to get more people to ride a bicycle to ballgames. So we covered a lot of territory.
Related to the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee, the MPO yesterday approved the multimodal plan for the city. So I think that'll be coming soon to maybe your next committee meeting for you guys to look at. And Council is getting a copy of that, I think, Jenny? Yes, thanks, Jenny, for passing that out. It's somewhat technical, but it has a tremendous amount of information about all kinds of things in our city, whether you are a biker or a walker or just somebody who is curious about crash data and traffic data in the city. This plan you will find very interesting. And we look forward to working with the MPO and figuring out how we're going to implement some of the things that are suggested in this new plan. But it definitely will bring, as Tech Dot continues to design and construct our Loop 335, right, relevant to what you're talking about, Howard, and wanting more people in our city to be able to bike safely, this plan allows them to design specifications for Loop 335, a hike and bike path that follows the loop, but it doesn't share the same. It's a separate path. It's separate from traffic flow. So it should be safer.
That's what we need.
I know, it is. So it only took three years of talking about this and working on it. But I want to give a shout out to Kyle Sneeterjohn and Travis Munoz and just the work that they have done and put in behind this plan as well as all of our Tech Dot partners. We look forward to seeing how this changes our city for the better.
I needed something else to read.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, one more thing to put on Cole's nightstand. I'm sure Shiloh's getting tired of all the city things that are stacked up to read there.
He loves it.
Oh, okay. I'm glad to know that. I'm glad. My family still teases me when, I don't know, first month or two I was on council, they overheard me say on the phone, "Exciting things are happening in solid waste." And so that's a big joke in my family is they still go back around to the things that excite me.
My issue is you can't sit in the backseat of my truck anymore. There's too many three-ring binders.
Yeah, budget books and... It's good. It's good. Okay. Cole, I'm going to throw it to you if you don't mind, Housing Subcommittee report.
Sure. So Housing Subcommittee is still new and getting going and had a couple of good meetings, really trying to work out a good vision and where we're going. And this is targeted. So we're looking at specific neighborhoods, older neighborhoods, and being able to partner and work together, incentivize both developers, builders, sellers on one side, and buyers and property owners on the other side. So we are looking specifically to cast a vision for homeowners. We're not necessarily trying to incentivize renters. We're not trying to incentivize multifamily specifically. Not saying that couldn't happen, but really looking for home ownership. And so kind of the four pillars that we've outlined here is, you know, the city obviously is helping to drive this. And we are in the forefront of trying to help craft this on behalf of our citizens. We're looking at the lender's side and the seller's side together. Because a lot of what we have in the market that we're trying to hit is you have individuals that can pay the monthly cost of owning that house, but they either can't qualify because of bad credit or they don't have the cash down or they've got something else in their way that's, you know, keeping them from being a homeowner. So bringing CDFI, I believe, is, if I get those...
You got it.
Letters in the right order.
Community Development Financial Institutions.
Yes, great. They're looking at a few things. Some of our local banks are helping. And we really are trying to overcome some of the hurdles that we see in these neighborhoods that keep them from developing and utilizing some of the infrastructure that we already have that doesn't really talk about what Jared was talking about and going two or three miles outside of the city, but revitalizing these older neighborhoods. On the other side, you know, we really have the buyer in mind and we have the neighbor in mind. So we're thinking neighborhood, we're thinking the buyer, homeowner. And then we're also trying to help developer, builder, seller. And the city's really trying to help craft this. And so we're bringing this together, looking at all of our options. And we've got some good people involved that are going to be able to bring a lot of context to it and outline some challenges. We'll overcome a lot of these before we're able to present this so that then when we do have something ready to present, it's very doable. It's applicable. It's not just a, "Hey, we've got this neighborhood picked out. Y'all go figure out how you can build a house over there."
Excellent. You know, this really came directly out of the Community Solutions Meeting that we had into May, first of June, to talk about housing and our need for housing in the city, whether that's a brand-new development on the southwest side of town or it's an infill project in an older neighborhood that has struggled to attract new building and new residential development. We wanted to listen to those voices and concerns that came out of that meeting. And so this Housing Subcommittee is a, it's Councilmember Stanley and I serving for the city council to look directly at how can we encourage infill development in older neighborhoods. I thought you did a great job summarizing it, Cole. And, you know, I hope it won't take three years, but it's, there's a lot of work to do between point A and point B. So just suffice it to say that we've been working about six weeks on it. And I'm very pleased with the meetings that we've had and the progress that we've made in that period of time. So, Council, any questions that y'all might have about the purpose of the Housing Subcommittee or progress that we've made so far? No? Okay. Good job, Cole.
Thank you.
Item 1H, request future agenda items and reports from the city manager. Anybody have something for future agenda?
Environmental Task Force.
Okay.
Can you give a report?
I didn't hear that, Howard. What'd you say?
Environmental Task Force.
Environmental, okay.
Is met.
Councilmember Stanley, you will find yourself challenged to outwork Howard Smith. He serves on more subcommittees and task forces. I don't know, maybe Mayor Pro Tim Powell rivals him too, but I'm sure you're up to the task.
I know Howard's just getting his stride, too.
Yeah, yes, indeed. Okay, we'll get that one added. Anybody else? Okay, yes, bathroom break. We'll be back in five or ten. Thank you. Okay, y'all ready to go again? We'll start with the consent agenda. Anything, Council, there that needs to be pulled off for questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a four-oh vote. Moving on to item 3A. Public hearing and consideration of a first reading for an ordinance that would amend our municipal code with regard to emblems for a water tower on Route 66. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Andrew Freeman, Managing Director of Planning and Special Projects, to present the item. I know we've got some citizens who have persevered to this point of the meeting to be here for this item. So, Andrew, take it away.
Yes, sir. Just this mic here. So this is a follow-up to Council's discussion at the end of May on some feedback received on how to best process these requests that we started to receive as far as emblems on water towers. So what you have before you today is the first reading of an ordinance that took the feedback from Council and tried to address all the concerns we heard from that meeting. Some of the major ones, we did include that it would go to the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board for a recommendation before it comes back to city council. It'll consider the color of the tower, color of the emblem, size of the emblem, and other factors appropriate for the size and scale of the water tower to make sure everything is appropriate. And then as part of the process, city staff will evaluate materials used. And then as part of the process, city staff will evaluate materials used, expected lifespan, and also develop a plan for when the emblem would need to be repaid or replaced to make sure it still looks good. Also, there is the following criteria. It would be representative of all of Amarillo such as the city logo or represent cultural or historical themes of natural, national historical significance that can further the goal of city branding, tourism or community pride as part of the review process. There are also some other minor changes included in the ordinance. One of them in particular being that the, the public hearing process and notification, we made more of an optional process now unlike street renaming where it's more personal affecting someone's address. This one's naming a facility or a water tower emblem is a little different and kind of take that on a case-by-case basis if we have to do a public notification, newspaper process while it's being reviewed by the board or City Council. So, we've got on today's agenda for a public hearing and first reading and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Andrew, would this affect like if we, if Parks and Rec wanted to start a program where people could adopt amenities, park benches, whatever? And by adopt, I mean pay for.
Pay for and install, yes.
Would that, would this policy govern that?
So, this one's fit into more of parks and buildings and like rooms within a building. It doesn't really come into say as far as like donating a tree or a park bench to the smaller, smaller items. But if it's renaming a room at City Hall or the name of City Hall, this ordinance applies to those.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one's not really touched on.
Mayor, if I might, our Parks Department is adopting policies to start allowing for the naming or sponsorship of amenities as a, as a, as a measure to try to generate additional revenue to offset expenses within the park system. So, they've, they've started to do that at like the tennis center in some of these locations. So, it is, it's in, it's, it's in its infancy, but it is something that they are internally working on some different options related to that.
Okay, great. I think it would be good Kevin, if we could, if council maybe could get some just information on what that looks like and ideally a menu that we can start putting out to citizens that say, if you, you know, want to honor someone or here's what that would look like.
Yes, I'll, I'll get with Michael and we'll get you an update to be sent out to council.
Great, thank you very much. Back to Andrew's presentation. Any questions? Okay, thank you Andrew. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item, Agenda Item 3A. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this matter will have three minutes at the podium to do so. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this item today? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Item 3A.
Yes Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending the Amarillo Municipal Code, Title 4, Chapter 4-6, Article 3, Division 4, Sections 4-6-153 to 158 for regulation of emblems on city-owned properties and facilities providing for a severability, providing for a repiler and providing for publication and effective date as it relates, as it relates to the San Jacinto Neighborhood Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve the ordinance with regard to Agenda Item 3A. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes with a 4-0 vote and we appreciate your being here Dora and staying the whole time, all the work that you and the San Jacinto community are doing to move this project forward. Thank you. Sure. Okay, Item 3B is another public hearing with regard to approving the 2021-2022 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan. Mr. City Manager?
Hi Mayor, we have Stephanie Rodarte Shuto, Assistant Community Development Director, here to present the item. Stephanie?
Thank you, thank you for your time today, Mayor, Council, City Leaders. I'm here today to present our annual action plan for the Community Development Department, the public hearing and the required approval of the resolution to be submitted by, to HUD by August 16th in order to activate our annual funding for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Grant. The allocation for this year is noted is for the CDBG is $1,647,145 for the Home Partnership Grant is $706,565. We opened the NOFA in April and closed our Notice of Funding Availability 30 days later in May. CDAC met on June 8th and 10th to approve the allocations. The department made allocations and CDAC had their open hearings and decided, determined those allocations as outlined in the annual action plan. The 30-day comment period has concluded and so I'm here today to request approval of CDAC's recommendations. Thank you.
Any questions, council? Stephanie? I know we also have with us today your Board Chair, Ms. Lilia Escaheda, who is a former City Council Member. Lilia, we appreciate your service on the board and very much so appreciate the time you've committed to be here today just to represent this plan.
Yes ma'am, we have several members, members of our CDAC here today and we do appreciate the time that they take to come and serve the community and make the best decisions for the allocation given to the department and the city each year. So, thank you.
Who else is here that serves on that board? Just raise your hand if you want to. Hello, Ms. Mildred, yes, okay, great. Thank you ladies both very much for your time serving. Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter and anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against Item 3B will have the opportunity to come to the podium and speak for three minutes. Is there anyone present who wants to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Item 3B.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution for the 2021-2022 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan, which we would allocate $1,647,145 for the Community Development Block Grant and funding $706,565 in the home funding grant.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the annual action plan for the CDBG and Home Investment Partnership. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Item 3B is to consider a resolution approving the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 for the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation.
Mayor.
Mr. City Manager?
And I apologize for not jumping, jumping to this earlier for you. If it's possible, we have a guest here who needs to catch a plane, who's one of the, one of the applicants that Kevin is going to be talking about. So, if we can move 3F up to be considered prior to 3C, that would be great for one of our attendees who needs to catch a plane.
Okay, council, any issues with doing that?
For the last minute, talk on that, just got a text from Kevin Carter on that.
Okay, great, let's do that. So, we'll go ahead and jump to Item 3F, which is Project 210103, Torque Works. Mr. Carter?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
How are y'all? What an exciting day. So, it's going to be, at least.
If you get your budget approved, you mean?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, hopefully these three projects help us get that done. So, this is to consider an approval for a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Torque Works LP. Torque Works LP is an industrial-controlled bottling, bolting service and supply company with a focus on the power generation industry, specifically wind, solar, gas and steam turbines. Torque Works has created a unique business model to service that industry. They have purchased a new facility here in the Amarillo community and want to locate up to 80 new wind service technicians in our community. And so, they have entered into an agreement with us, provided your approval, to AEDC would provide an incentive of $960,000 for new job creation. That's 12,000 per job for those 80 jobs. According to our incentive guideline, those jobs would pay at least $55,000 annually. And so, according to the incentive guideline, that would qualify them for $12,000 per job. Also, a relocation incentive of 200,000 to attract new talent to our area. So, this is a way, we're talking about a growth in the city, a growth development plan. This is one of those ways where we, we can help as an organization where we're trying to grow because that, that talent is currently not at least trained yet here. They have met with Amarillo College to talk to them about reinvigorating their wind industry educational model and are certainly willing to take those graduates that go through that plan with Amarillo College. So, it's a way to grow a new industry here in Amarillo and then also bring some folks from outside of town to help with the initial servicing of this industry. I do have a guest, our guest here is Kevin Corley with Torque Works. They're currently headquartered in Spring, Texas and we are certainly glad to have Kevin with us today and are very excited about the opportunity that Torque Works brings to the Amarillo area. Our board did recommend approval of this project. They voted on that on a 5-0 vote on July 19th to approve this project. Would certainly entertain any questions that you might have, council.
Nothing? I'd love it if Kevin wanted to come to the podium and just tell us a little bit about what, what was attractive about Amarillo or how we can do a better job even attracting. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to be here. Yeah, Torque Works is located in Spring, Texas and we've taken a good hard look at several communities. Amarillo appears to us to be, given the location and our current direction to move into the wind industry, it's a great location. That and the Amarillo College can provide us with good labor to kind of support our base, which seems to be challenging more and more, you know, with the COVID situation. So, we're certainly excited to come here and be a part of the community.
Well, thank you, we're really, really glad to have you. We know that your employees would be happy to be here, anybody that relocates to our city. We certainly want to welcome them and love having their families here in our school systems and just part of the Amarillo community, we're looking forward to having them.
Thanks, well, that's the message Kevin and his team has brought to us and we certainly want to convey that message back to you guys that we're excited to be a part of the community, want to be an active contributor. So, we look forward to.
As you can tell, we're working on housing, we're working on all kinds of things to make the city a better place. So, I'm, I'm really excited about having this opportunity. Thank you for picking Amarillo. Yeah, okay. Council, anything else? Other questions?
One thing I might add, just, just for clarification, the incentive would be paid out over 10 years and it would be paid as performance is done. So, it would be paid, everything would be paid in arrears on this as they perform.
And that's standard, right Kevin?
Yes ma'am. With a few variables, and we're going to talk about one of those variables in the next project, but in this case, it will be paid in as they perform.
Great, do we have a motion with regard to Item 3F?
Yes we do Mayor. I move to approve the location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Torque Works with a job creation incentive of $960,000 and a relocation incentive of $200,000 to attract new talent.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve this project. And do you have any questions, Councilmember Smith, or anything that we want to discuss before we take a vote? Council? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 4-0 vote.
Thank you, council.
Thank you Kevin. Okay, let's back up to the budget, Item 3C. Mr. City Manager? Or is Kevin, Kevin Carter has somebody he's appointing to do it?
No, no. This is Kevin again.
Kevin comes for the fun stuff? He's going to make Doug do the budget?
No, absolutely not.
This is presentation of the budget. Council needs to approve the budget each year prior to the approval of the city's budget. So, Kevin?
Yes Mayor and council, I bring to you before you our budget. I think y'all have it, I think it's, can be loaded on the screen. What you have before you is just a summary page of our budget request over the past five years. As you can see, from fiscal year 1718 all the way up to what we're asking for for fiscal year 21 and 22. Total administrative cost for us of 1.714 million. That's about a 4% increase. If you look at last year, we did not ask for an increase. So, it's the first increase in two years that we've asked for. And part of that 4% is that we did add two staff number, new staff members last year. One was a replacement and one was a totally new position that we added. I will tell you, the two new additions to our team, one came last August and one came in October and they have just been a tremendous asset to our organization and could not be more thrilled with the team that we have over at the AEDC. Marketing and business development, that is an increase of $50,000 or a 7% increase. We think now is the time to really market our city for economic development just because of the, the, the current climate. In, in certain states, we certainly want to take advantage of, of the hot market that Amarillo is. This is a great place to live and other places, folks may not say that as much about their community. And so, we want to take advantage of, of working on, taking advantage of that situation and marketing Amarillo to those communities in other states. And so, we are asking for a 7% increase. Also, we did not ask for an increase last year in that part of the budget. So, total administrative and marketing, business development, 4.5% increase when you talk about 2.464 million over, last year was 2,343,500. That's a 4.5% increase for a total of about 11.5% of operating cost on our budget, which is a very lean organization when you, when you look at organizations and we're running on 11.5% operating. That allows us to use the other 88% for project development and incentives for companies coming in. And so, I'm very excited to keep that low. Total project support, that, there is an increase in that. Last year it was 800,000 as the year before. This year, we're asking for 1.4 million. With that increase, there's $600,000 that we would put back into the Enterprise Challenge. West Texas Enterprise Center has asked us to revive that program and we're excited about that. The local, the local banks are now going to be a part of that decision-making and it's going to be a little bit, it's going to be a lot better. It was already great for the first 24 years that we had it. We took a two-year hiatus. This will be the 25th Enterprise Challenge this year and that is going to be even better than it has been and there's some new things going on with that. And so, I would ask that you would consider us to be able to do that and to partner with the Enterprise Center to revive the Enterprise Challenge. Again, that is, that model has been around for 25 years. There are several communities in the state that have copied that program and so, we're even going to, it's going to be a better program than it has been and so, we're excited about reviving that program and that would be, that's included in that 1.4 million dollars in project support. So, for grand total budget of $3,864,156. Can certainly answer any of the questions that are included in the next three pages. That just pretty much is just the breakdown of what the summary that I went over, but certainly would answer any questions.
Kevin, what was your previous investment in the WT Enterprise Challenge?
It's the same investment that we've had for probably the last 10 to 15 years, would that say? 10, it's been the 600, it's been the 600,000, the last 10 minus the last two that we took a hiatus on.
Okay.
So, that, that number has not gone up. And to break that down, 500,000 goes to the recipients and then we pay the Enterprise Center $100,000. In that 100,000 is marketing, their management, some coaching for the, the winners and so, 500,000 to the recipients and 100,000 to the Enterprise Center for managing that program.
Is that roughly 10 different businesses on average?
It can be. The maximum award is 100,000. The last, two years ago, there were six winners in that, and they, the judges only decided to give 405,000 away. So two years ago, it was a $505,000 investment and not the whole 600. Those judges really scrutinize those business plans and make sure that the money that they're awarded is going to go to what? And then Doug and the finance team do a really good job of making sure that those businesses that win the challenge still uphold the thing that you've got to be a primary job provider. So.
Approximately how much is brought in to AEDC annually?
Typically, that number has just hovered right under 20 million. This year, with sales tax going through the roof, we see that number is going to, we're going to reach 21 million. We've never reached 20 million, and I think we're going to, we're going to blow past that this month. We'll reach 21 million, and we went ahead and took a conservative budget and just kept it at 21 million with no increase. And so that's what we're hoping that we can, that's the number we're using for revenue. We think it'll be larger, but we're going to, we're going to budget conservatively.
So do you think, Kevin, that Enterprise Center is something that you guys are, y'all were participating in when you took a break, how to restructure the program for even greater impact than it's had?
Yeah, the Enterprise Center asked, Enterprise Center asked to take a break from that, just to see if we could revamp it. And Kyla and her team have done a great job of incorporating the banks. There's three banks that are going to be involved in that. We think that's going to be on a three-year rotating basis, which bank is going to be involved. And this year, so we've met with the first bank that's up in the rotation, and they're developing that. We're still kind of developing that plan as far as how that for sure is going to work. What we thinks it's going to strengthen some of those newer businesses that may not have that banking relationship yet. It gives them a banking relationship on these businesses. And so we think it's going to be a lot better program. And it takes, it just enhances that program, having that banking relationship with the winners and for us and for the Enterprise Center.
But you would think that year over year, that that's a program you would like to stay committed to?
Absolutely. I think it, I mean, there are some really huge success stories. They just had their 20th, Enterprise Center had their 20th anniversary celebration last week, and when you walked in, there were 10 of those winners that were on these big plaques. And I mean, you're like, wow, you know? And in fact, a couple of them, having done this, I didn't know they were winners of the Enterprise Challenge, and like, wow, they're a big company now. And they started out as winners of the Enterprise Challenge, and the success that they've had from just receiving, you know, funds from this program is just incredible, the success that they've had.
Kind of related to, how did Torque Works find us?
So there are two gentlemen that are the primary owners of the corporation that grew up in this community, and so that's how they found Amarillo. So they bought, they have purchased Torque Works from another company, and so that's one of the reasons that they have found Amarillo.
How did Cacique find us?
That was from a site selection and a relationship that we built with site selectors. And that's, you know, that's how we do economic development, and we're a little bit different than other communities, not that they don't do it. We just think we do it better because we build those relationships with people. When we go off to some of these things that we're asking you to send us to, we go off and, you know, we have five team members that travel, and those five team members, when they get on the ground of these events, we go and we network and we make relationships with these people. And we, one of the team members had made a relationship with the site selector that brought us Cacique. So that got us in. And then when they got here, the first night that Cacique came to Amarillo that we know of at least and met with us, just the relationship building, they felt at home in Amarillo, which if you live here, you know that. You know that feeling that you get from people that live here, you know? And so that's the good thing about being here in Amarillo, and that's, we do it a little bit differently than other communities, and I think that's why we're successful. And not that they're not successful, but I think that's why we've been successful.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. We really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and it's fun.
It is.
Watch your group growing.
Fun to be successful.
Mm-hmm. It's fun to watch your team growing, and you have the fruit to prove that with a bigger team, you can go out and get more done. And so we just need to keep growing the things around you that you need, supporting Amarillo College, supporting school districts, supporting things like
It's all a team effort and all the partners.
发展, things like that, that affect how you can recruit and sell our city.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it's, we've got a great team with the city, we've got a great team with the two counties that we have, the five school districts that we have, and all our other partners that we have. Workforce is a huge part of that, and so we're certainly thankful for all the partners that we have because we can't do this by ourselves.
Very true. Okay. Do we have a motion with regard to AEDC budget?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution for the 2021-2022 budget for the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation for the purpose of promoting and developing warehousing, industrial and manufacturing enterprises to promote and encourage employment and the public welfare. And the budget is in the amount of $3,864,156.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this budget for the Economic Development Corporation for 2021-2022. Any further comments or questions, discussion on the motion? Okay. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes with a 4-0 vote. And item 3D is also an EDC item, so I'll hand the mic back to you, Kevin.
Thanks, Mayor, counsel. This is, this item is to consider approval of a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and North Heights Linen Service LLC. North Heights Linen Service will be a work-owned co-op that provides linen service to regional hospitals and other businesses in our, in our area. I'm especially excited about this program because it truly is a giving back project. This project is going to hire folks that have not always had everything go their way, and it's going to be a great deal, and we're excited about the service that they're going to provide to these regional hospitals. I know that a lot of community members have worked on this project, and I certainly want to introduce some of those folks here today. Before I get into the ends, I just wanted to say, I'm going to introduce Puff, and she's going to introduce the folks that are here with the linen service. But Puff Naeigos is kind of in our contact here, and I'm going to let her introduce who's here, and then we'll talk about the details of the project.
Thank you, Kevin. I'd like to introduce Mildred Darden. She's on our board, as well as Matt Mathias and Mary Emity, and Kimberly McDaniels is our legal representation. So thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you all for being here and for the work you've been doing for years. Yes, one more?
Bowden.
Bowden Jones.
Oh, hi, Bowden, back in the corner, yes.
He slipped in without me noticing.
Welcome, Bowden. Thank you for your work.
And if you haven't been by there, the building is just incredibly beautiful. It's 25,000 square foot facility located at 601 West Amarillo Boulevard. The projection is that they would employ, over the next five years, they would be at full employment of 100 new employees with 3.3 million in new payroll projected by year five. This incentive would be, Amarillo EDC would provide North Heights Linen Service a $250,000 incentive for maintaining an average of $1 million in payroll over the five-year period. So an average of $1 million a year over five years. The $250,000, I did say there was one variable, we would pay this $250,000 upfront. And then there's a formula, if they, if their performance isn't met, then they would repay the amount based on the formula of not making the $1 million in payroll. But we're certainly, we are certain that they will make that payroll. Anyway, that, the board approved that location incentive agreement on June 28th, 2021 with a 3-0 vote with one abstention. Scott Bentley abstained from that because he sits on their advisory board. And so we are really excited about this project. It's a way to give back to our community, and we think it's going to provide a great service that is needed in our area with linen. Would certainly answer any questions.
Yeah, questions, counsel?
So can you explain to me the reason for the 250? Like where that came about?
So we're, it's projecting it to be 50,000 over a five-year period with the, we're paying 50,000 a year for them to provide $1 million in payroll.
Okay. So it's not truly 250 upfront? It's, or is it?
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and pay the 250 upfront. That way, it helps them with some of the things that they need to get started, but then there would be some recapture if that million-dollar payroll is not met over the average of five years.
Okay. So they have a five-year performance?
That's correct. Yes, sir. So if they make, if they, if they meet, let's say, 800,000 in year one, and then they meet the million-dollar threshold the other four years, then they only have to pay a little bit back on the first 800. But if they average, let's say they make $6 million over five years, then they're good. So it's an, it's an average.
Okay.
No other questions, I don't think, Kevin? It's an innovative and exciting project, and it's fun to watch citizens get involved and take an idea all the way across the finish line. And there have been many moments in the process where someone said, I don't think this is going to work. And I'm looking at the faces of people who said, well, I'm not going to give up. So just the Winston Churchill in each one of you said, never, 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 never give up. And I just want to commend you, and it's, it's an honor and a pleasure for us to be able to take a vote on this project today. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and North Heights Linen Service LLC with a job creation incentive of $250,000.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Howard Smith to approve this LIA between North Heights Linen Service and the AEDC. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes with the 4-0 vote. Congratulations.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item 3E is to consider the approval of an LIA between the EDC and Roberson Cartridge Company LLC. Kevin?
What an exciting day, third project. I mean, this is great. And y'all approved my budget, so I'm in good shape. This is a, to consider approval of a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation, Roberson Cartridge Company LLC, or RCC Brass, as they're commonly known. Roberson Cartridge Company manufactures brass cartridges for firearms of any type. They actually, they manufacture the brass part of it. They don't actually, at this time, manufacture the ammunition, just the brass cartridge for that. I have the privilege of introducing you to Jeff Roberson, who's here today, who is the owner of RCC Brass. Jeff, glad you're here. The highlights of this project include a new facility that they've purchased for 41,000 square foot in this, in our area. This would provide a location incentive agreement for 50 new employees. They currently have been here, they have four employees now. They are going on this aggressive growth model, and this is one of the things that I talked about when I first got here, that we really needed to revamp and get our business retention and expansion up to speed because people already live here, and we want those businesses to expand, and it's easier because they already know that, they already know how great it is to be here, and we don't have to sell Amarillo, we just have to sell them on growing their business in Amarillo. So the 50 new employees would provide a payroll of, new additional payroll of 2.25 million projected by year three with an average salary of at least $45,000. According to our incentive guideline, that would be a $10,000 per job incentive for those 50 new jobs of $500,000. And then also in that, there's some very technical CNC machines that are part of the process, and in the, in the beginning are going to have to recruit some talent from outside of town. And so inside this agreement would also provide $50,000 in relocation for up to 20 employees of $2,500 per employee. That agreement would be over five years, the agreement periods over five years, and would be paid as they perform. So this one would be paid on our normal model where we pay as they perform. So we are really excited about this project. You know, before Jeff came and visited with us, I don't think any of us knew that this manufacturing facility was located here in Amarillo, and so we're really excited that he's wanting to expand this facility, and it's a pretty highly technical, most of the jobs are very highly technical and very high, highly paid. And so we're excited about the expansion with RCC Brass. And so certainly would answer any questions. Our board did approve this on July 19th, 2021 with a 5-0 vote. So total, total deal would be 550,000 is the total amount for the location incentive agreement.
So Mr. Carter, I know that I could probably Google this really quick, but you could probably tell me quicker than I can do that. Where exactly is Garrison Drive?
So it's on I-27, just south of, it is where, if you remember where Backyard Adventures was, it's right behind that building.
Right behind that building. Know exactly where it is. Thank you.
It's great to have a project in Randall County.
It is great to have one. I know they are very excited about the work that we're doing.
Good. Other questions? No? Okay. At this time, do we have a motion with regard to item 3E?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Roberson Cartridge Company LLC with a job creation incentive of $500,000 and a relocation incentive of $50,000 to attract new talent.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this LIA. Mr. Roberson, do you have anything you want to say? Not to put you on the spot, but you're here.
Well, Amarillo is a great place, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for doing business in our city, and you've been here long enough that you're part of us now. So anything we can do to help you get stronger and bigger and have more of an economic impact, we're thrilled with that. So thank you for the payroll dollars that you bring to our city and all the other economic impact.
Thank you too.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Passes with a 4-0 vote.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
You're welcome.
I think I'm off now.
I think you are off, but that's good work because what I add up, Kevin, is 230 employees and additional payroll in our city of $9,675,000. And so you guys just keep chugging along and bringing more economic impact into our city. That helps our property taxpayers, and it helps our business owners. And I see Marin Reeves is nodding his head. Marin, you got your work cut out for you here. We need more workers. I know you've got plenty of jobs to fill, but.
Yes, we do. But it's good having great partners.
Yeah, it is. You're right about that. So thank you, EDC team. I'm very proud, we're very thankful for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Item G, 3G, is a public hearing and an ordinance with regard to a rezoning. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Brady Kendrick, Planner 2 in Planning and Development Services, working with Andrew and his team to present the item. Brady?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This is a presentation and consideration of item G, public hearing to consider an ordinance rezoning of a 178.43 rezoning of a 178.43 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 182, Block 2, AB&amp;M Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Agricultural District to Planned Development District 395 for an industrial and business park. The vicinity is Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue, and the applicant is Kevin Carter for the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. The adjacent zoning consists of Residential District 2 and Agricultural District to the west. No zoning exists on the adjacent land to the north, east, and south due to the adjacent land being outside the city limits. Adjacent land uses consist of vacant land to the north and south, single-family detached homes and undeveloped land to the west, and an industrial land use to the east. Rezoning of the property, which was recently annexed into the city in March of 2021, is being requested in order to begin the development of an industrial and business park. Although the entire, although the entire site is being considered encompasses approximately 178 acres, the southernmost 55 acres of the overall site, Phase 1, is currently being prepared to be developed with a facility that will manufacture a variety of dairy products and with, and with specific development plans for Phase 2 are not known at this time, but the proposed standards in this planned development would, would apply to the entire 178 acres. Using the planned development zoning as a tool, the city is able to set development standards that will attempt to mitigate negative impacts to existing development west across Georgia Street. Some of the key development standards addressed by this planned development include setting allowed and prohibited land uses, sign standards, screening requirements, setbacks, landscaping requirements, outdoor storage regulation, and others. Analysis of the zoning change begins with referring to the conformity to the comprehensive plan, future land use and character map, the recommended neighborhood unit concept of development, and what impacts, if any, a particular request will have on the existing area zoning and development patterns. The future land use and character map identifies the track as suburban commercial and suburban residential category as being the recommended development types within the applicant's track. You can see a map on your screen illustrating this additionally. And additionally, there is a third recommended development type, industrial, adjacent to the site within Section 182 to the east. The yellow shaded areas is the suburban residential, and the pink shaded areas are suburban commercial, and the purple shading indicates the industrial category. The applicant's track is outlined in red. While the proposed zoning does not conform to the two recommended development categories within the track, the existing development pattern, a unique mix of recommended land use categories within this portion of Section 182 west of the railroad tracks, creates a situation in which a departure from the recommended land use categories could be deemed appropriate. The Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion is based on the fact that, one, a portion of Section 182 west of the railroad right-of-way is largely undeveloped. That said, all existing development within the same section of land is either commercial or industrial in nature, such as the Korsch Heinz Manufacturing Facility and an XL Energy Substation. Two, approximately two-thirds of the same area is designated for commercial and industrial uses per the future land use and character map, with the remaining third being designated for single-family homes. If developed in strict performance with the future land use map, a situation where industrial and commercial development would be allowed to occur immediately adjacent to residential homes. Such situations are generally discouraged due to the incompatibilities inherent with such a situation if it were to be developed with strict adherence to the future land use map. With the area bounded by major transportation corridors such as Loop 335 and the railroad right-of-way, this section of land is more likely to develop of non-residential land uses that take advantage of these transportation links. Georgia Street will be updated to a full section line arterial right-of-way, and as such, a figiscal separation of 120 feet will separate the residential land uses west of Georgia from the non-residential land uses east of Georgia, and will represent a clear and defining delineation of such uses. Regarding the neighborhood unit concept, this traditionally calls for more intensive land uses located at or near section line arterial intersections with a transition of zoning inwards towards the center of a section. If Section 182 west of the railroad right-of-way were to develop as recommended by the future land use map, the neighborhood unit concept would not be adhered to in any manner, whereas industrial and commercial uses would be immediately adjacent to residential with no transition in zoning uses or zoning provided in between. Considering these factors, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that it would be more appropriate for this set portion of the section to develop with non-residential land uses rather than a pattern depicted by the future land use map currently. It is worth noting that as alluded to, Section 182 west of the railroad right-of-way was until recently located outside the city limits. Considering the land has recently annexed, the city of Amarillo now has an opportunity to regulate the land uses within this particular area of land via land use controls, whereas if not annexed, controls would not have been possible with zoning. Notices have been sent to property owners within 200 feet regarding the proposed rezoning. At the time of this writing, one phone call was received expressing concern about impacts to their home's property values, and this was a resident in the City View subdivision. And that is the only call we have received at this point. And considering the above, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request represents a logical establishment of non-residential land uses in a section of land that is more conducive to such and has already begun developing with such land uses, especially northeast along the railroad tracks. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented by a seven oh vote. And then this is the overall scope of the site with the site development notes listed on there. That will be incorporated to this planned development and will govern the development within this area. And this is the proposed site plan as part of this as well for the 55-acre site for Casique. And this is also the landscaping plan that goes along with that. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions, counsel? Brady? Thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with regard to item 3H, counsel?
Mayor, do we have a public hearing?
Oh, public hearing, yes. Thank you very much for that reminder.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this matter will have three minutes at the podium to do so. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning a 178.43 acre tract of unplatted land in accordance with the legal description in the vicinity of South Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this change with regard to item 3G. Is there any further discussion or questions on that motion? Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? The motion passes with a four oh vote. Okay. Moving on to item 3H. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor, it's Brady Kendrick Show. You've got this one and a couple more after this, too. This is a rezoning that has to do with the old National Guard site. One of our local businesses is going to be using it as a service center. Brady?
Sure, yeah. Item H is rezoning of a 6.78 acre tract of unplotted land in Section 138, Block 2, AB&amp;M Survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Multiple Family District 1 to Planned Development District 396 for general retail land uses plus signed production and assembly, storage warehouse, fleet vehicle parking, and fleet vehicle washing. The vicinity is T-Acre Boulevard and Highland Street, and the applicants are Jamal Enterprises for Awards Recognition Concepts LLC. This rezoning is being requested by the applicant in order to repurpose and utilize the existing buildings on the site on this parcel, which once was an armory, as a business support center for Toot and Totem, which would include land uses such as offices, signed storage and assembly, warehousing, and fleet vehicle parking, all of which are not allowed within the existing zoning and is the reason for the request. The requested planned development will set general retail development standards for the site and will allow all uses in general retail plus those just mentioned. The future land use and character map recommends the applicant's tract to develop with general commercial uses. The general commercial category calls for a mix of development types, including retail and service-related land uses as the primary focus. Initially, the applicant inquired about light or heavy commercial zoning. However, it was the planning department's opinion that considering the recommended development type for this area plus quarter horse drive serving as a clear delineation between retail and commercial zoning that exists in the area, these would not be appropriate. Additionally, GR would not allow for all the uses proposed by the applicant for the site. The neighborhood unit concept typically calls for more intensive land uses to be located at or near section line arterial intersections with a transition to less intensive uses in this section. The Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request being a retail planned development allowing a handful of commercial land uses, and with the site situation adjacent to a highly traveled thoroughfare, T-Acre Boulevard, between heavy commercial zoning to the west and multiple family district to the east would represent an appropriate transition in zoning and development between the two just-mentioned zoning districts. Notices have been sent to property owners within 200 feet regarding the proposed rezoning. As of this meeting, no comments have been received. Considering the above, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented with a seven to zero vote. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Brady, counsel? Okay. We'll open a public hearing on this item to entertain comments from anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3H on the agenda. You'll have three minutes at the podium. Is there anyone present who wants to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning a 6.78 acre tract, tract of unplatted land in accordance with the legal description in the vicinity of T-Acre Boulevard and Highland Street.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve, or yes, to approve an item on 3G. It's, it's throwing me off, we don't have ordinance numbers yet, so to approve the item 3G. Any further discussion or questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes with the four oh vote. Item four, no, 3I is again a public hearing with regard to rezoning ordinance. Brady?
Yep. Item I is a rezoning of the remaining portion of Lot 6, Block 5, Mary Gould Acres, Unit Number 2, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 26, Block 9, BNSF Survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Multiple Family District 1 with Specific Use Permit 94 to General Retail District. The vicinity is Amarillo Boulevard and Port Lane, and the applicant is Thayer Farzon. The rezoning is being proposed in order to develop the property with a short-term lodging establishment. The site was previously used as an assisted living facility that has been vacant for approximately eight years. The applicant who recently purchased the property intends to repurpose and remodel the current building for the proposed use. The future land use map identifies the applicant's track as being the general commercial category which the applicant's request complies with. Regarding the neighborhood unit concept of development, while the applicant's track is not located at, in a location that general retail zoning would typically be located, such as a section line arterial intersection, the Planning and Zoning Commission did note that this section is not developed in a traditional sense due to Amarillo Boulevard, a commercial and retail corridor bisecting the section. The Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the requested change would be located in an appropriate location along Amarillo Boulevard, taking into account the existing development and zoning patterns found in the area. And the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that appropriate transitional zoning is in place that will mitigate any negative impacts on surrounding development. Notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet, and we did receive one call. Once the request was explained to the caller, they expressed no opposition to the request. And considering the above, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a seven to zero vote. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions, counsel? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing with regard to item 3I on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this matter will have three minutes at the podium to do so. Is there anyone present who wants to speak on this agenda item? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning the remaining portion of Lot 6, Block 5, Mark Gould Acres in accordance with the legal description in the vicinity of Amarillo Boulevard and Port Lane.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve item 3I. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with the four oh vote. We'll move on to item 3J. Brady?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this one and step out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, item J is a rezoning of the west 60 feet of Lot 5 and all of Lot 6, Block 21, replata Block A, Paramount Terrace, Unit Number 4, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 228, Block 2, AB&amp;M Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Multiple Family District 1, the General Retail District. The vicinity is Janet Drive and Western Street, and the applicant is the city of Amarillo. A change in zoning is being requested in order to allow development of the site with retail-related activities. Currently, a potential developer is under contract to buy the site and develop the site with a coffee shop should the rezoning be approved. The site was previously used as a municipal fire station. The future land use and character map development type for this tract is multiple family. This calls for concentrated development types such as apartments and condominiums. While the rezoning does not strictly fit the future land use map category for this tract, it is the Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion that given the pattern of development adjacent to this tract and the intersection in general, a change could be warranted with the reason being, being the following. The neighborhood unit concept of development calls for more intensive land uses such as retail office and multifamily development to be located at or near section line arterial intersections with the intensity of use scaling down as you move into the section. This tract does fall within the recommended area for such uses in zoning in that it is located at the intersection of Western Street and Janet Drive. Given the fact that three of the four corners of the just-mentioned intersection have developed of non-residential land uses, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes, believes that allowing retail on a third corner is appropriate and in line with the neighborhood unit concept of development. With this, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that this is a logical continuation of existing zoning and development patterns in the area. Notices were sent to all properties owners within 200 feet regarding the proposed rezoning. The planning department did receive one phone call regarding the request, but they did not express opposition to the request. Considering the above, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented by a seven to zero vote. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions, counsel? Okay. This time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3J. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3J? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning the west 60 feet of Lot 5 and all of Lot 6 in accordance with the legal description in the vicinity of Janet Drive and Western Street.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3J. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we have one abstention, so that passes with a three oh vote. Jenny, do you mind letting Councilmember Stanley know we're done with that item?
Actually, doesn't really matter, we're moving into executive session. So at this time, we will move to the executives, executive session portion of our agenda, and I'll ask our city attorney to read our dismissal language, please.
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings, at a closed session, the Amarillo City Council was announced on July 27th, 2021 at 4:09 PM under the following authority. Section 551.071, consult with an attorney on a matter in which attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter. Section 551.0676 and 551.089 discuss the deployment or specific occasions for implementation, security personnel, or security devices. Section 551.087 discuss commercial financial information received from existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility or for incentives the city is willing to extend or financial information submitted by the state.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.